And welcome to the June 4, 2024, regular monthly meeting of the Tiverton Planning Board. My name is Stuart Hardy and I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. And I would like to begin by taking a roll call and establishing a quorum. So Christopher Shriver, raise your hand. William Gerlach.
Here.
Janice Gomes.
Here.
Richard Taylor.
Here.
Rosemary Eva.
Present.
Patricia Hilton.
Present.
Stephen Clark.
Here.
And VA Loebz is not here, and we haven't heard from her, but so we expect that she'll be coming in a bit late. In addition, we have Todd Romano on my left, our legal counsel, and next to him, Ashley Sweet, our interim part-time planner and AO, and Ed Rotella, our land use clerk, and Richard Rogers will probably be here later. Nathan Michael, our consulting town engineer, is with us tonight, and he also works for Weston and Sampson, this is Ashley Sweet. So having said that, here comes VA right now. So the first item on our agenda is the adaptive reuse of the old white wood frame historic chapel building at 331 Main Road near Famous Pizza. You probably all know where that is. We did have Mr. Lykins, the architect, with us, back on April 2, I believe, and attorney John Garrighi, I believe, was also with us. And this would be a conversion of the historic building into two commercial units on the first floor and four residential units on two floors above. And also, the applicant is requesting dimensional relief for the north side setback in requiring 10 parking spaces as opposed to the required 12. And this is a public hearing, so I will be asking the audience if they have any questions or comments. And we now do have an architectural rendering of the front of the facade, and we have landscape and lighting plans, which we didn't have back in April. So with that word of introduction, I invite Mr. Lykins and Mr. Garrighi to come up and make a brief introduction, just to bring everybody up to speed on where we are. And then I'll ask Ashley to make a few comments, because she has written in a memo to the board, which you will get as well. But we just got it this afternoon, so I haven't had a chance to review it. So, Mr. Garrighi?
Before you start, Stu, I just want to say one thing. This is the board's first unified review.
Mm-hmm.
All right? And I just want to explain a little bit of the procedure.
Sure.
And I'm not going to go into detail, really, but you're essentially sitting as a zoning board in determining and assessing the variances that are being requested. You're going to have to make a conditional recommendation on that, and then you'll have to sit as a planning board, right? Change hats metaphorically, and make your decision as to the preliminary plan minor subdivision.
Uh-huh.
All right? Logically, it makes sense for the applicant to present its entire package, right? But then I need you, just for procedure purposes, to put on that zoning board hat, make your conditional finding as to the variances, and then switch your hats and be the planning board again. Does that kind of make sense? Ashley?
Yes. No, but...
Because of what the General Assembly has said.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, just whisper in my ear and tell me what to do. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Members of the board, John Garrighi, on behalf of the applicant, Clearview Inc. Mr. Lykins is here. Let me first say, I think we very much appreciate the opportunity to have been here in April and make a presentation. I think that was very helpful for us, and I think very helpful for you. It gave us some feedback, and as a result of that meeting, we've made some changes based on comments made at that meeting. As your counsel has indicated, this is a unified development because there is a dimensional relief required. It's also a land development project because it's a multifamily building. And as we indicated previously, the kind of new words from the General Assembly, adaptive reuse, this is an adaptive reuse project, which encourages residential dwellings in commercial buildings. So, and as a result, there's a requirement in your ordinance that talks about adaptive reuse, and we needed, because of the modification, to allow greater than 50% of the gross floor area to be used for residential purposes. We need a finding from you with respect to that as well. Mr. Lykins is here. I think, and I'll ask your counsel, I think he has to be sworn, because he's going to be testifying with respect to the standards, and I'm going to ask him to make the presentation. He's here, actually, in two capacities. He's a registered architect. I asked him how long he's been an architect. He says for about 35 years. He's also served as a building official and a zoning enforcement official and foster in Providence. And I'm going to ask that he be qualified both as a registered architect and as a zoning official with respect to the standards that I will ask him, which are the general standards that are required to be established with respect to a dimensional variance. So I will do that after he makes his presentation with respect to the project itself and with respect to the changes that were made as a result of the meeting that was held here in April. I will also say, for the record, that this meeting was originally scheduled for the May meeting of this board and continued, that advertising and notice was made as of the May meeting, and it was announced at this meeting in May, as I understand it. I looked online, and it was not here, that it was continued to this date, to the date certain. So I think the witness has to be sworn. I don't know whether that's your process or not.
Yes.
So who does the swearing in this case?
Raise your hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So, go ahead.
I do.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Lykins, I'm going to ask you, just to kind of give a narrative with respect to the project.
Sure.
This board has already heard it once. I want you to focus on what the changes were made.
Okay.
From when we were here in April. And once you've done that, I'm going to ask you some questions with respect to the standards for dimensional variance.
Okay.
So that we have met them. So if you want to proceed.
Sure. So, like everybody's familiar, it's an existing two-story building, and we're proposing to, and the upper story is quite tall, as not uncommon for a church, so we're going to raise the existing roof about a half-story up to provide another normal height, full story. So that will give us three floors. The ground floor will be a commercial space, and then the next floor up, which I would call it the first floor because it's at road level, will be two apartments, and then the second floor will be two apartments. The building has, or the land has quite a dramatic slope to it. So at the front of the building, at Main Road, you're just a little below floor level at that first floor for those two apartments. The parking lot, as you drive back, the slope is so dramatic that by the time you get to the back of the building, you're below ground floor level, the lower level. And that's where the commercial space would be. One thing I've done since the application is looked at the ground floor space, the commercial space, and this is going to be relevant to parking, so I'll get that part out of the way. The foundation on the building is almost two feet thick, and then we need to add an interior wall to meet energy code, to provide insulation, you know, and a nice finished interior. And the point of that is it reduces the usable area to 999 square feet. So using that in a calculation for parking, I calculate that we need three spaces for the commercial space and then eight for the residential, two for each unit. There's four units, giving us a total of 11 spaces. And if you look at the new site plan I submitted, I did some reconfiguring on the lower level parking here, and so I've been able to achieve nine regular spaces along the back of the lot, and then we have two on the side. One is a large accessible space that can accommodate, you know, for handicap parking and a van. But anyway, for a total of 11 spaces. So you can look at it, but I think we've now met the parking requirement. So as I calculated, 11 required, and we're able to provide 11. So we've been able to take care of that issue that we had before. We're not able to reduce the side yard that we're relief looking for. That's for a new stair tower that provides proper fire exits, you know, for the building and the new apartments.
So, Mr. Lykins, maybe you can talk about that, the need for the variance. So that's a new, that's an addition to the structure.
Yes.
Which is within the side yard, which is required to be 20 feet, and we are providing eight and a half, is that right?
Eight foot five and a half inch, yeah.
Eight point four.
Yeah.
And that's required because of the fire code?
Right. So we need that second means of egress, and the means of egress today take up a lot more room than it did, you know, back when the building was originally built. The original stairs in the building are very narrow, winder stairs, and don't even have a proper headroom, so they wouldn't come close to meeting the required safety codes today. So the new stairs are larger and take up more room. We're not encroaching that side yard any more than the building already does. There's that tower on the front right, as you're facing the building, that is a couple inches closer to the side yard than our new stair tower. So we're, you know...
You were within the same setback. That setback already exists.
Right.
Although you are creating a new addition in a different part of the building.
Exactly. Yeah. On the changes we made to the exterior from our previous, you know, the comments we got when we were here before and the good advice we got. So on the front of the building, we've changed the materials. We're going to do a siding material, either a drive-it or a composite siding. I've been looking at this new composite siding. It's dimensionally as thick as wood and has the same shadow line as wood would have, but it's maintenance-free. So it's a really good product. But it'll have the exact characteristics of the wood siding of the time.
And that's a kind of a facade? There was a kind of a stone facade before?
Right, before we had some stone on the building, yeah. So I removed that. And then also, I've instructed on the construction drawings for the contractors to do the best of ability to remove that upper portion of the gable on the street side, where it has some fancy dental work and that arch and the date on it. So we're going to do our best to remove that and then reinstall it up into the gable of the new floor up there. So, and I've changed the flat roofs on the towers to peak roofs, much like they are today, so...
Do you, can you put the architectural rendering on the screen behind me so that the audience can see it? Because it is very different than what you showed back in April.
Yeah, I emailed everything in, so I don't know if anybody has it that can, I don't know how that works. Or I have it on my laptop, so...
We can plug in a laptop if you...
Yeah, I have it on my laptop.
It's just that one still.
Yeah, I think so.
I had one comment on the gable end.
Do you want to just plug in?
As I remember, Ms. Anderson did not request you to salvage...
He's already got it on his computer, so he's going to plug his computer in.
Ornamental...
Unless you have it already, Joe.
Piece. I think you need an L in there.
How do I do it? It's going to give you a cord.
On the elimination draw. Right now, so you're going to salvage the existing gable.
Depending on what kind of...
I see. Hold on one second. Is the architect on that?
Hey, can you start the projector?
You got it?
Yeah.
Cool.
Now it looks like something's coming up.
Yeah, just the lights up.
Can't see it.
Yeah, you've got it. Here we go. Yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't hear your full question, Richard.
When the subject came up on the gable end.
Yes.
There, I don't think the intent was to salvage it. It says salvage on the...
There's a typo on the...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The thing was to salvage it. It says savage it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Which was the opposite of what the request was.
Yeah, salvage is what we're trying to do. We're trying to restore it.
You read it correctly.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're going to try and...
Save it.
Save that from the existing building and then reinstall it. Yes, sorry.
Yeah, so maybe you want to be using what's up in front of you.
Yeah, so also, you know, the other change you made is on that left tower, the Gothic windows. So just pulling some of the character from the original building into this design, so that it's a little bit of a combination of, you know, the changes to accommodate the apartments, but still reflecting some of the original architecture of the building.
It's a big improvement, in my opinion.
Well, thank you. Yeah. And so this elevation on that tower, again, the two more of those Gothic windows, and then once you get behind that, it's, the majority of the building is the siding. We talked about the wood siding, and then I'm just using a flatter siding on that little bay window there, just so I make a little distinction there, a little bit of a statement. And at the bottom there, you can see that's the commercial entrance with the glass doors and the tall glass windows. That'll be the commercial area.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, very welcome. Thank you.
So if that's the end of your presentation...
Well, I want to, and maybe your counsel, I just want to ask him the standards for dimensional variance.
Uh-huh.
If you want me to do it at this point, I'd be happy to do that now.
That's it. Yes.
That's it. So, Jeff, you're familiar with the standards for dimensional variance in the town of Tiverton and the state of Rhode Island, are you not?
Yes.
Okay. And you're familiar with, so the relief for the dimensional variance here is what? Can you just describe that briefly?
Yeah, so the relief is the side yard setback on that one side is the primary relief we need and the area. So this lot is not as large as it would need to be to support, you know, the four units. So we're looking for a variance, a dimensional variance for both the size of the lot and the side yard setback. And we've...
Side yard setback.
Yes. And, yeah, I don't know what you're having, but this is, we feel in both cases, this is the least relief necessary to make this...
Hold on one second. Hold on one second. So in your opinion, is the hardship for which the applicant seeks relief to the unique character of the land or the structure and not the general character of the surrounding area?
That's correct, yeah. It's mostly the structure. It's a tough lot, and it's a, you know, it's an old building.
It's an old building, and the structure, the fire code now requires this second means of egress for a structure like this.
Right.
Because of the unique nature of the structure.
And even, yeah, that and even the first means of egress that's there doesn't accompany or near meeting today's code, so both of them had to be altered, but, yeah.
Is the hardship the result of the prior action of the applicant?
No.
They haven't done anything.
No.
In your opinion, will the granting of the requested variance alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purposes of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan of the town of Tiverton?
No, I don't believe so at all. I think it'll be an enhancement, yeah.
Because it's consistent with what's there. It maintains its historic appearance, is that right?
Right, that's right.
And if the variance is not granted, will the hardship suffered by the owner amount to more than a mere inconvenience?
Absolutely, yeah.
Because he wouldn't be able to carry on, wouldn't be able to do it.
Right, couldn't be able to do anything with the property.
Excuse me, Stu, I need to ask one question. Did you say you're asking for a variance as to area?
No, it's not lot area. That has changed.
Oh, with the adaptive reuse?
Yes, the adaptive reuse provisions do not require that.
Sorry, yeah.
Correct. Yes.
Sorry for muddying that up.
Yes. At one point, that was required. The laws have changed since that time.
Correct.
I saw your eyes go up, and I agree with you.
You do not require the parking variance.
That's true, yes. We do not, we don't need it. Yeah, we're now able to meet parking.
We do need, just to finish that, we do need, you know, a finding with respect to a major land development project, and we do need that action with respect to the section of the modification to allow greater 50% of gross floor area under the adaptive reuse provision of the Tiverton ordinance.
Which is at the discretion of the board? It's not a variance?
It's a modification.
So you all understand. So to confirm, the only variance now on the table is that right side setback?
That's correct.
Yes, correct.
Is, are you finished?
I'd be happy to...
So I'd like to call on Ashley. Ashley did do a memo to the board, and I believe the applicant has a comment, has a copy of that. So Ashley, if you could summarize that, because some of us haven't had a chance to go through it. And then I'm going to ask any member of the public who would like to comment just on the relief that is being sought.
So the memo just, again, summarizes the application for you and then gives you a draft decision both on the lands development application under the adaptive reuse and also gives you a draft decision for your, as you sit as the zoning board under Unified Development Review, the variance standards apply, as the applicant was just going through. And so I've given you those standards with a, you know, some language underneath it for you to consider and amend as you see appropriate. I don't have any additional comments on the application itself. I'm happy to answer any questions on process or on anything that I provided for you in the memo, but again, what I did was just outline your planning findings of fact and the variance requirements that have to be met, and then offered you some things, you know, some language to consider there for you to amend as you see appropriate.
Thank you.
And you will, if you're going to use that decision, we would just have to make, I think we could make a blanket amendment, that we would remove the parking language from that decision, and we'll pull that out when we finalize the decision, now that that's off the table as a variance.
Okay, is there any, is there any member of the public who would like to be heard?
I'm standing there, John.
Okay. Yes, I saw your hand go up first. Please state your name and your address.
Michael Fairhurst, 337 Main Road, Tiverton. I am the abbot immediately to the south.
Right, that's a very nice house.
Thank you. The question I have, I am assuming now, since the ancient rite of way is being used, that no variance for the sideline needs to be done to the south, which means they are free to develop and use right up to the property line, and the setback can be zero feet, zero inches. That's what it seems to be from the drawings that I get. I see that there's a dumpster stanchion or position, which would be under one bedroom window of mine, and a handicapped parking space under the next one. If this is the way it's going to be, and the actual stone wall that holds up my yard is the only setback that they need to use, there will be developments right underneath the windows of my house. Could someone address that?
Yes, could you please put the site plan up so that we can see what... And we're talking about the south side.
Right.
Not the north side. The north side is the side where we are being asked to grant relief.
Right.
But the south side...
So, Ray? There you go.
There's not much, I know that there's not much room between the chapel and your house. I assume that your house was at one time the parsonage for the...
It may have been. There was a wooden fence that went right in front of both of them.
Right. And the architecture seems to be similar as well.
Well, the building date looks pretty close. It says, mine says either 1867 or 1880, and that chapel is 1882. I have some lifetime pictures of these for your perusal if you need it later.
So, Jeff, do you want to address that? So here...
So we're talking on the view on the screen, the right-hand side, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
So there's only eight, eight feet, roughly eight feet at the narrowest point between the building as it...
On the other side.
He's on the other side, yeah. He's where the parking, where the handicap parking space is. He's adjacent to that. So the one handicap parking space would be, as he said, under one of his windows and then...
Okay, okay, I'm looking at it upside down.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. And then the dumpster would be near the property line, which is to be enclosed in a, you know, opaque fence with the gates on it.
So again, there was no dimensional issue with using that old rite of way, so it makes the effect of a side setback zero?
Well, the setbacks are relevant to a structure, and these aren't structures, so there wouldn't be a setback required for the parking space or the dumpster, to my understanding. But I'm still not saying you don't have a concern, I just, from a zoning standpoint.
Would it be possible to move the dumpster away from the house?
Yeah. We could possibly swap spaces, so to speak. In other words, if I was to put the dumpster down on the back of the lot where one of those spaces is and then add another parking space up there, then there'd be parking spaces instead of a dumpster, it'd probably be more...
Would that be agreeable to you?
That would certainly be better than where it is. And that also depends, too, on what the nature of the commercial enterprise is going to be. Is it going to have a lot of visitors during the day? Is it retail? Is it commercial? Is it one space, one bay? Is it two?
I don't think they know.
Okay.
We don't do that.
No, where will they park? Who comes to visit?
Right, and landscaping. Do you have any recommendations on landscaping? Would that help a little bit?
I see there landscaping, basically now, there's an area, a strip, that is part of that rite of way that I keep mowed and cleaned and try and keep turning cars off and Amazon trucks off, so it doesn't knock my stone wall down, because my yard is elevated. That's what holds the whole thing up.
Yes, and would it be possible not to have any parking near the stone wall, near, adjacent to the house, but to put some landscaping in there so that the neighbor is not bothered by either a dumpster and trucks coming in for the dumpster or even parking for the commercial building?
Well, in all fairness, one of his drawings depicts some landscaping during, you know, along that property line. There's a little indentation where it looks like they intend to put something.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you would like to see what it looks like now, as a refresher for those who don't get up that way, I'd be happy to hand these lifetime pictures over.
We'll accept those as evidence, sir.
So if Mr., if the applicant is willing to work with us on this, I think we can work something out. We're not going to make a decision tonight. I think we have made a decision about moving the dumpster. We haven't, we will not probably be discussing landscaping tonight.
No, no, I get you.
But as we go forward, I would encourage you to talk to Mr. Lykins and to see what can be worked out, because you appear to be very reasonable, and Mr. Lykins appears to be very reasonable, and I think you can...
Anything is an improvement over the load of firewood that's sitting there now. However, I hate to see too much stuffed on too small a piece of property.
Yeah, I completely agree, and I think it would look so much better for Main Road also if we had some nice landscaping in there. So, is there anyone else who would like to be heard from the public? And I see Jamie French's hand going up. And could come up, please?
Just one second.
And so, this is Jamie French, Craig Avenue. And Jamie, Jamie, I expect you to be brief and succinct.
I'm a little confused. I don't understand how we're going from one unit to five units. Is that with adaptive reuse? You can go as many as you want?
If the building will accommodate it, we have 90-some units in the Bourne Mill, because the Bourne Mill is an adaptive reuse project.
Right, but you know, it's like, it seems to me that we're in a, the area was an R-30 zone, now it's, it was changed to commercial, but it doesn't, the building doesn't, the building doesn't accommodate it. I feel like I'm in Disneyland. We'll just take the roof off and put an extra two apartments in. We could...
So I'd like... So I'd like to hear actually from Susan Anderson.
Well, can I finish?
Concerning the historic element of this, so...
Right, but I, I, I do think that...
So you've raised the historic issue, so I'd like to...
But my question is, is why can't we just, why can't we be happy with two apartments and leave the roof? I mean, isn't it enough to take one church and change, change it into a commercial space, change it into two apartments, have some really nice landscaping, have plenty of room for parking, and leave it at that? But why are we pushing? I mean, we're changing, the densities are, are immense. I mean, you have this little tiny lot and you're, you're jamming in an incredible amount of, of people in it and it just doesn't...
So I'll, I'll speak to that. It's an adaptive reuse project and there's a state law that says that an adaptive reuse project is either fifteen dwelling units per acre or...
How many?
Fifteen dwelling units per acre.
Wow.
Or as many as can be designed to still meet minimum housing standards.
Right, but how, but...
So that could be less than fifteen, it could be more than fifteen, but that's state law. So...
Why don't we try and put fifteen in there?
This is not, this is not...
I mean, that, that would be great. Everybody could have a closet.
This is not a design of Tiverton zoning. This is a state law that passed in 2023 that is in effect in all cities and towns in Rhode Island as an adaptive reuse project. Fifteen dwelling units per acre or as many as can be designed in the building that still meets minimum housing.
So I think then we should try and get fifteen in there. We could put five on the first floor, five on the second.
No, 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 no. Jamie, you're being argumentative and I will not tolerate that. But I would like to hear, I would like to hear from Susan Anderson, the Chair of the Historic Preservation Advisory Board. Susan actually spoke on April 2nd and requested that the, that the architectural rendering be modified to better reflect the historic character of the Temple Chapel. Ms. Anderson, are you, are you satisfied?
I am, and I, I really appreciate the change, the preservation of the, of the nomenclature at the top. I also appreciate the two towers. I also appreciate the, the material change and the saving of the Gothic windows. You have brackets underneath the tower roofs, it looks like.
Right.
And what, what the other, the north tower, does that have windows? Because all I saw on the screen was just the southern tower has the Gothic windows.
It has a, right, it has windows on the other side.
Does it have Gothic windows as well on the other side?
I don't believe it.
That tower?
I don't believe so. Let me see. Oh, yes. Yeah.
Good. So you're saving most of the Gothic windows?
Yep.
Thank you so much for doing that. I, I do appreciate the, and the material that you're using. I know the composite because it's a similar composite that's used on the, the, I assume it's like a similar composite that's being used on the Manchester Building, the Bridgeport Block that's near the gut, near, I don't know, you guys aren't from here.
You guys know what I'm talking about.
Yes, it's a, it's a composite material that looks like wood.
Yeah, right.
It's dimensionally, you know, the size of wood.
Exactly. And it looks kind of like, yeah.
Yeah, it's much more maintenance-free product, but, right, yes.
All right. I, thank you for, for doing this and for keeping. And to your question, the building was built in 1867. It was across the street near where Pecassett School was. And it was being used by the YMCA and Benefit Hall as Benefit Hall. And then in 1885, the North Tiverton Baptist Minister wanted to use that, that building. And he is the one that moved it across the street to where it is now. That's why that says Temple Chapel, 1885, but the building itself is 1867.
And so it's my house.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So, thank you, Susan. And I think Ashley had a comment to make her a question.
Well, I just have a question. I'm trying to understand, you're showing this as a twenty-foot right-of-way. And I guess I'm trying to, because when I look at the aerial photograph, that right-of-way comes out to, well, at least it shows as a driveway, out to Main Road. But the, you're showing the...
What is the extent of the right-of-way? Does it go to Main Road?
Does it go all the way to Main Road, the right-of-way?
Yes, it goes to the front property line.
So if I have a car parked in that first space, and there's a car parked in the handicap space, and there's a dumpster, and I don't know what this, what is this?
In between the handicaps.
Is that a dump out?
Landscaping.
Okay, so that's landscaping.
Yeah.
Can I, can I get through there?
But it doesn't go anywhere anymore, I don't believe.
It looks like it goes to the property behind it, which does also have access off of the side street?
Functionally it does, but they're not the same.
They legally don't anymore. What do you mean?
Anymore.
Well, they used to use this for a parking lot. And so we, we brought that up when my, when my client purchased the property.
Ultimately, it's going to be between you and the, the owner of the easement, the dominant estate. But has that right-of-way been abandoned?
I haven't legally been abandoned, no.
So I don't know how you can use it then for like permanent objects, like parking spots and dumpsters and landscaping if it's a, without that easement being in, you know, abandoned by whoever has that easement?
Right.
If they're not using it, then maybe they'll give it up to you. I don't know.
This is an issue that you, you have time to think about because we can, we can discuss it next time you come back.
The owner of the back property, because he owns this property as well, he owned both properties. And my client spotted it from him. And we had a discussion about their use of this lot. And at that, I mean, that's only verbal, but he had agreed to real legal use of this property.
Okay.
I, I think in order for the planning board to make a decision where they're approving a development that utilizes that easement for, you know, in a way that would impede access, then they're going to need something that shows that that acts, that easement has been abandoned or given off or...
Gotcha. Yeah.
Right.
Don?
Okay, but that's, that's an issue for another day. And I don't, I, I really want to avoid a, a long discussion about the easement because we all need to do some homework on that.
Well, I just want to make sure that they're aware of this and they can come back with an answer so that we don't prolong it again by telling you next time.
But we do have decisions to make tonight. And, and I do sense that we're, we are sitting as the zoning board of review, being asked tonight to make only a single decision to grant relief on the, on the setback. And, and that would be on the north side setback, correct?
Right.
So we are, we are being asked to accept a, a smaller setback. And I think that there's general agreement around the table.
You don't need to do this tonight if you're going to continue.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Totally up to you.
I, I would, I would just recommend that if there are some outstanding issues that need to get resolved as it relates to the development portion of this, that you hold off on the variance until you've heard the whole thing so that you can make a full, you know, an educated decision on, on both components.
Okay, so Ashley, the only thing we need to do tonight then is what you recommend in your memo. And you have given us the, the draft findings of fact and the draft decision on the Unified Development Review variance. So...
So I've given them to you for both of the applications in front of you, but if the, if you don't, if the board feels that the development portion or the adaptive reuse portion of this is not ready for a decision, then I would say that you would continue the application. You'd continue the public hearing. You have until, I believe it's July 13th, so that would give you your July meeting.
Yep, so our next meeting is July 2nd.
So you would, if the board feels, if the, everyone's in agreement that they don't feel prepared at this point to make a decision, you've asked the applicant to provide you with some additional information.
Yeah.
You would continue the application to the July 2nd meeting. We would discuss that additional information at that point. And then you could make your decision first on your variance, conditional on the adaptive reuse project, and then make the decision on the adaptive reuse at, in the same evening.
Gotcha. I, thank you. I, I, I didn't have a chance to read your memo in advance.
I didn't lay all that out for you. And this is a brand-new process for all of us, so we're feeling our way through.
I think, I, I sense that my colleagues around the table... Can I just comment? I understand you're going to continue it. Can I just make a comment on process here? I think it's a land develop, Ashley, a land development project.
Minor land development.
And the, and the dimensional variance.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, so I'm, I'm...
I just wanted to make a quick...
Absolutely. Go ahead, Dick. And then I'm going to call on Trish.
On the, on D2, looks like they show the leach field right under that, that right-of-way. Are you going to be able, especially if you move the dumpster into the back, are you going to be able to move the truck that's hauling that dumpster across that without crushing those pipes? It's not shown on, on one of those drawings, but it is on the, the paper one.
Yeah, so it's, this is, this system is designed to be under a road. So it's, they're using structural pipe for this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's made for traffic.
I actually was going to ask the same thing because I see something here that says existing paved area, then it says proposed gravel area. And is that proposed gravel area where the parking is?
No. No, it's on before and after.
So I don't know what, I'm not sure then what that proposed gravel area is.
Yeah, I'm not, not seeing the proposed gravel. I'm seeing proposed gravel.
Which sheet are you looking at?
I'm looking at the approved OWTS.
Which is what's up here.
Page one or two, Trish.
Page one.
Of, of the...
Look in, see in the, see the existing, see the existing building?
Yeah.
In the back, there's, there's the, the lowest set of comments in it, one, two, three. And it says existing paved area and then proposed gravel area. And there's an arrow that points to sort of a, I don't know, kind of a gray cross, a gray dotted area.
Yeah, that's to allow water to get into that underwater, yeah. Underwater storage.
So is it paved or is it stone?
There's a section of, of stone to allow the water to get into those tanks.
Okay, but you can park on it.
Yeah, yeah. You can drive over and park on it, yeah.
Okay. And...
It's like, it's a sort of a drain, so to speak.
And it, and, and you are allowed to park on top of it?
Yes, you can park or drive over, yeah.
And then the second thing, not that, I mean, you have a, a five-bedroom OWTS design that's been approved?
Mm-hmm.
But you're doing four bedrooms?
Yes, Mr. Lycans.
You gotta say, you gotta say yes.
Yes.
Or if that's true.
Yes, yes.
But you're doing four bedrooms and then a retail space, correct?
Correct.
Or some sort of commercial space?
Correct.
But are you, you know, as a board, I realize that you don't necessarily know what your commercial use is going to be, but it won't be able to go beyond the 115-gallon limit that's set for essentially what's a fifth bedroom?
Represents.
And that would be, that would be part of at least my requirement and your understanding of that.
I understand that.
So low water commercial use?
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, as a, for instance, the space couldn't support a restaurant or something like that. It's, it's, the only thing it really can support is some small retail or some office space. And the space by code just requires one bathroom because it's quite small.
And the abandoned water line that goes to the building behind it through that right-of-way is really abandoned?
I don't personally know that. So, this is my engineer's work, so...
Is that something we need to clarify in the next go-round?
I, I think it would be good to clarify that.
To make sure that that, that water service isn't actually serving that building?
It, it might actually be good to, to have your engineer at the next meeting because I think Nathan, our, our consulting engineer, may have some questions about stormwater runoff, given the new interest in low-impact development at the state level. We'll have them coordinate. We'll have them talk to each other. I think that's a great idea. That would make things go much smoother at the next meeting.
At the public hearing, though, John.
You want to have the hearing?
So it's evidence for you.
Yes. Okay, but, okay, but that, fine.
May I speak?
Yes, you, you certainly may, Steve.
Yeah, I have one other concern about the stone wall that's on the north side, next to the abutter here that's bulk.
South side.
South side.
Right.
That stone wall appears to be on the property line. And you said something to the effect that it holds up your property.
Right, because my yard is several feet higher.
So it's a retaining wall?
Right.
Okay, and it's on the property line. I just want to point that out so that we have an understanding who's going to be responsible for that if it needs maintenance at some point.
Thank you.
And I would...
Between the property owners.
And, and, and we certainly encourage the ma, the maintenance of historic stone walls. So I, I, I think all we need to do at this point is continue the public hearing to our July 2, 2024 regular monthly meeting.
May I interrupt you for one second?
Yes.
Can we make sure we're going to have a quorum for that meeting?
Sure.
It's two days before the holiday. I'm not here. So somebody will be.
July?
July 2.
July 2nd.
I, I'm sure, I'm sure we'll have some absentees, but I, but we have a full complement of nine members now, so it's a lot easier to get a quorum.
Do we need TRC?
So Ashley can, Ashley will be considering whether she would like to call a TRC on this. But that's, but Ashley...
I'm certainly open to your suggestions if it's like something you'd like to see. I don't, I don't have to make that decision alone.
I, I, I'm not sure that this project is so complex from a technical engineering perspective that we would need a TRC. But that's really up to Ashley. And, and Nathan, of course, would have good input put on that.
Yeah.
If he'd like to see a TRC.
And I was, I was just going to ask that, you know, I, I understand the solicitor's point in having that on the record with the engineers, but I also think it would be valuable to have them able to talk to each other and go back and forth a little bit and resolve some issues and then come here and put on the record what they've resolved so that we can avoid, you know, delaying things for the reason of like not allowing them to, you know, to, to talk. If everyone's comfortable with that, I think that's the best path forward.
Excellent. I, I do too. I see people nodding here. So I would like to make a, I would like to make a motion. Yes, Nathan?
Can I mention that one thing first?
Certainly.
Just to, what Trisha mentioned about the, I think there's enough changes on the plan now compared to what the plan is for the OWTS that at least an updated plan should be set to be. So I just think our engineers need to take a look at that to see if they can update it and should be set to be...
This is a brand new plan. I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, like Trisha mentioned, it shows the gravel and then it shows pavement on the, on the updated plan.
The gravel is the stormwater retention for the stormwater plan?
I just, I just, it says existing paved proposed gravel and it's pointing right where the paved parking lot is. So I just, I just don't wonder, if you could clarify that then at least, because I, I agree with Trisha, I just don't understand where the gravel area is.
So that, this is a stormwater retention design and the gra, and there's tanks buried underneath the paving. And so the gravel area acts like a drain that allows the water to get into those tanks, so it doesn't leave the site.
This is the setback, not the, not the storm wall.
Oh, okay, sorry. Yeah, so that's for the, I'm sorry, yeah, that's for it to breathe.
So if you could just take a look at it and see if it seems to be enough changes that are updated, because this, this OWTS is from 2023.
Yeah, we've been trying to do this project for a long time.
Yeah. And then on the stormwater side, just to provide the calculations, just as soon as you get for the stormwater design, you provide the stormwater design, but some backup calculations to...
I submitted those initially, but I can, yeah. I, I, yeah, we all got, I have like a hundred pages. Yeah, it's all been done.
Okay.
Okay, so I, I think I'd like to make a motion to continue this application and public hearing to our July 2, 2024 regular monthly meeting. Do I have a... I have a second? Chris Schreiber has seconded my motion. Do we have any further discussion? Here seeing none, all of those in favor, raise your hands. Unanimous. Thank you. And thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate that. Look forward to seeing you back and I'm sure we can get these issues resolved.
Great. Thank you.
So now I would like to go to agenda item number two, and this is again, a public hearing that has to do with land at Bulgamash Road. This would be fifteen eighty-eight Bulgamash Road, just west of Indian Hill Road. It's in an R sixty zone. I see Mr. DeMello coming up in court Chappelle, legal counsel. I I don't believe that you have been with us before, although you may have come on May seventh, because I missed that meeting. I was on travel. But I I believe that what is being requested here is an administrative subdivision to move lot lines, but despite that, I think we're required to treat this as a minor subdivision. And this would be plat two fifteen lots, one thirteen and one eighteen. So again, it's it's the north side of Bulgamash Road, just to the west of Indian Hill Road. It it has the Algonquin Gas Pipeline right-of-way going through it. And I believe Mr. DeMello is requesting relief for lot frontage and width. So with that word of introduction, I would call on either Mr. DeMello or Mr. Chappelle to make brief words of introduction.
Okay, thank you. And I think you're accurate. In the old rules, as you know, there was an administrative subdivision that you were unable to grant because it required a variance. You would make a decision. You would make a decision whether you positively or negatively made a recommendation to the zoning board on what they should do. We would go to the zoning board with the variance, hopefully, and then come back for the administrative subdivision. But now, under the new rules, because you can do the variance here, it's required to be treated as a minor subdivision. So what you have here is lot one eighteen, which is a landlocked piece. So what seems to be a no-brainer is we own a landlocked piece that has no access, that we get to it through an easement. And if we give it a piece of land, it will have frontage on a public way and own its own piece. And we give it a hundred and twenty feet. I know the variance says one oh nine. That depends on how you count it, but if you if you look at the drawing, it's one oh nine to a point, and then there's a small kind of subscale that Mr. Smith has on the side that shows there's another eleven feet. But I think Ashley saw it as a as a front yard variance, but if you count the two pieces together, it's one twenty. What really happens is, no matter what, in R sixty, you need a hundred and seventy-foot of lot width. And although back where the house is going to be, the lot width will be plenty wide enough, that strip is a hundred and twenty feet wide. And if you measure the lot width at this front yard setback, which is what the ordinance says and what we've gone round and round before on, if you measure that, then at the fifty-foot setback, you don't have the hundred and seventy-five feet. So we need a lot width variance. And it's really that simple, as you can see the addition. But if you look at the, when I saw the advertisement, Ashley, on the one hundred and nine-foot variance, and Bill is in Westport, but I did call him on that, he says it's a hundred and nine feet to a dot. So what you read was accurate, one oh nine, but there's a small scale on the side showing that there's another another eleven feet. So the two together are one twenty, according to him. That's that small circle, I believe, that. It's just because it wasn't a straight line, it was one oh nine plus ten point one. So that width is a hundred and twenty feet. But it still requires at least, it was advertised for both variances, so it doesn't really matter. But it what really the variance is, is that at the front yard setback, it is a hundred and twenty. Your ordinance in a one hundred and six in a R sixty requires the one seventy-five. It's therefore a variance.
I'm sorry, can I?
Sure.
I'm confused as to what variances you're looking for, Cor.
It it's advertises a lot width and a front yard variance.
Lot frontage.
Right.
Where requirement is one hundred and twenty feet and one oh nine point eighty-one feet is proposed. Is that correct?
Well, what I'm telling you, Bill Smith tells me, is that it's a hundred and nine feet from one of the corners to the little dot that says one oh nine. And then in the, I believe, that circle with the point.
Right here?
I believe that circle and the point.
Feet.
Shows that there's another ten feet of frontage.
It's blown up.
Yeah, where it's blown up. He he says because it wasn't a straight line, he stopped at the one oh nine, and he says it's measured at one twenty.
Well, what I mean, what did you apply for for the variance?
I applied for the lot width. Somebody in the planning department saw the one oh nine and advertised it to both.
Okay, so are you telling us that the lot frontage is actually one hundred and twenty feet or greater?
According to Mr. Smith and according to that drawing, yes. And you can see with the.
So you don't need lot frontage relief?
I don't believe that's the case. Bill's supposed to be.
What I said is correct.
What you said is correct.
Okay.
But that's what we're asking for. If it was a different interpretation by 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 you, Ash, then I wanted to make sure we got the variance, but.
No, I think I think it's just the issue that it it just wasn't clear.
Oh. Did Tommy do this one?
Yeah, this is from Principe.
Yeah. I think Bill filed it, though.
Right.
Yeah, Bill Bill Smith filed it. Our office did the survey.
Do you know anything about the one oh nine and then the?
Uh, if you give me a second, let me just pull it up. I was prepared.
Just making sure he uses his microphone.
Oh.
I mean, we can circle back to whether or not you need a frontage variance or not. It's advertised that way. If you need it, it's covered. If you don't need it, they don't grant it.
Right. I was just, that's a great idea.
So Ashley, well, we're waiting for for Tom Principe to refresh his memory.
Yep.
What are your thoughts on this? Because I don't think we've all had an opportunity to read your memo.
So this came to me as an administrative subdivision. Because of the dimensional relief, I I can't grant dimensional relief, and so I can't grant an administrative subdivision that requires dimensional relief. John and I looked at this together for an agreement and issued a denial of the administrative subdivision based on that, which the state, for two reasons, this is in front of you as a minor, because the state law, you can't appeal an administrative denial of an administrative subdivision. That's the the remedy for that is to file a minor application. The other issue is that the the law does not speak to an administrative subdivision that does need dimensional relief and that being handled under Unified Development Review. So Unified Development Review is specific to minor, major, and development plan review and does not cover the administrative subdivision. So we did discuss that with Todd as well and came to the conclusion that we couldn't put this in front of you as an administrative subdivision with Unified Development Review because the law doesn't speak to that type of application. So this is before you as a minor. I've given you a draft decision on both the minor subdivision and on the variance standards that you would need to find for granting the dimensional relief. And I mean, this is a a situation of two existing lots. One lot doesn't have frontage or access. You're, you know, you're essentially taking space, you know, area from one lot, moving it to the other lot to give that that lot that's essentially landlocked, frontage and access. It's an existing lot of record. It just doesn't, can't get there.
So we're not creating a lot. We're not creating a street. There were two before. There's two now. There's no street. We just merely took a landlocked piece, and we could have come and asked for a fifty-foot driveway so that the person actually owned their road and asked for a seventy-foot front yard variance and a larger. Instead, we tried to hold to the one twenty and took that down. Other than that, it would have required no relief.
Right, we understand that. Since this is a public hearing, I'd like to invite any member of the public who would like to make a comment or ask a question to come up to the podium.
Cor, are you all done?
I I was going to have him go through the standards for you, but.
Okay. And also, Tom, did you did you reach your conclusion yet?
Yeah.
I I'm giving Tom opportunity. I was going to call on him later.
This is the chair members of the board, Tom Principe, registered professional engineer. Again, we have a registered land surveyor, Stephen Long, who had stamped these plans. We actually worked in conjunction with Bill Smith's office. Bill did the design and the filing, so we were the surveyor of record here. But again, I guess, just to answer the question for the record, this, there is no new lot being created, just to concur with legal counsel here. And again, the lot width is one hundred and twenty point oh one feet.
Can you explain why the one oh nine, if there's the one oh nine there, it's in two segments?
Correct. Yeah, so it's in two segments. So we kind of broke it out. We actually went back and forth a little bit with the billing official, just to kind of articulate this a little bit in bold. If you kind of zoom in, we have a dark, bold line that shows us as a lot width equals one twenty point oh one, which is right on the plan. If you kind of zoom in there, I'm not sure who's controlling the computer. Yeah, right there. If you can zoom in a little bit more, just, yep, right there. So if you put your cursor up, right there, up, 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 right there. That so that was a dimension that we kind of went back and forth. That was actually one of the revisions, just to kind of articulate the exact dimensions of that property, if that answers your question.
But as the lot frontage.
Yep.
Is that a parallelogram? So it's one twenty and it comes in two R? Because they took the one oh nine eight one that I see in the bottom left there.
Yeah, but that's not straight all the way through. That's just a segment of that line.
Okay.
The overall width is one twenty point oh one.
But that applies to both the lot width and the lot frontage for the.
Correct.
That was my.
Correct, yes. Because again, it's confusing, you know, it was measured at the front setback line. So that's what they asked us to do. So is so it is parallel. So I guess mathematically, that's the same number of frontage and width. Width, if I think if you look at the code, it's measured at the front setback line.
Yes, it is.
Right.
So.
We know we.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, so. Yeah, so that's why.
We know that's the new rule, and that's where we're measuring. But the frontage is measured at the street.
Yeah.
Correct, we know that, yeah.
I think that little circle to the right.
I do think that the circle.
The detail big.
Shows that.
Yeah, exactly. It's kind of articulates it, yeah.
That there's a point, and you see the ten-point? So it adds the additional ten feet.
Correct, for the frontage. But again, just to confirm.
And the extent that it's a parallelogram, if it's.
We're not asking for variance for the.
And we'd see the nine-foot difference, even in our I A.
That's why that ended up on the agenda.
Right.
Because it wasn't.
No, it was a good catch.
Wasn't clearly marked as the frontage line. We saw the lot width line and we saw the fronted line, and it just said one oh nine, and it.
Sure.
And I get that. I didn't follow that. But when I read the agenda, I called and said I thought we were there for one variance. There's two. And then he explained to me over the phone that if I looked at the detail, I'd.
Better to advertise for too much than too little.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So is there any member of the public who would like to come up? Hearing, seeing none, hearing none. Any member of the planning board would like to ask a question or make a comment?
I do. No. Where is the rest of lot one eighteen? You have to have the entire lot. You're modifying.
There's a match line with the second page?
Second page? I only have one page.
A bullet?
Oh.
Up the top?
Yeah.
It goes off the page.
That's the locust map.
And the abutters, I mean, it's there's an abutters list, but it doesn't have the entire lot. One eighteen.
That's the abutter, that's that.
What's that?
Can you make a s-
It was on the plan.
If you scale up, it looks to be another owner at the top, and it looks to have the whole.
It it doesn't. If you look at the the detail on this one. No, it goes beyond. Look at the the backup. Yeah, but look at the backup. It will show you that there are other lots. You have a lot one twenty-eight, a one twenty-seven, a but.
What's the upper lot to be? Yeah.
The dotted one right there.
Right there, see that right there? On the left? Right there, the match line. Bring it down. Right there.
That's sort of the match line.
That's the match line right there.
Oh, it's just to the side.
Right.
Because it's longer than my paper to read.
But you, so I think it's, yeah, the topic is, but it could be done with two different sheets if you like.
If it's a match line, you should have more to it.
So, yeah, I guess I understand your point. Again, it just just because of the scale, rather than break it up into two sheets, I think that draftsman and I believe, again, we work with Bill Smith's office.
Oh, who's here?
Perfect, perfect, so.
Say for a survey question.
So. Just give the engineer, yeah.
Bill, it's just that the.
It's no showing the whole lot.
The drawing shows the main part of the lot that stops, and then the match line that's sent to the lab. So they want to make sure that both pieces.
Okay, we're we're really, we're really getting out of out of focus here with discussions among the civil engineers. Rosemary was just making the point that on the on the smaller sheet that we have, Bill, it doesn't show all of, I think it's one eighteen lot, one eighteen.
It does if you put the match line together.
Hold on.
Yeah.
Because because we are kind of a zoning board right now. State your name, please.
Oh, William Smith, President of Civil Engineering Council.
You swear to tell the whole truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth?
I do.
Hey, Mr. DeMello, you spoke earlier as well. State your full name, please.
Mark DeMello.
Okay, raise your hand. You swore that everything you've testified to so far has been the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And everything that you will testify to from here on out will be as well?
Yes.
Tom, your name?
Tom Principe.
You swear that everything you've testified to to this point and in the future during this hearing will be the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
So rather than go through this again, I would like a sense from my colleagues on the planning board. Do you feel comfortable moving ahead and taking a vote on this tonight? Personally, I do not, because I haven't had a chance to review Ashley's or even read Ashley's comments. I just got them tonight when I walked in. Although I certainly will take, I will go with with the sense of the board on this. What we're what we're being asked to do is wearing our zoning board of review hat, grant grant dimensional relief, just one item of dimensional relief. And then I believe we would be asked to approve the minor subdivision with the findings of fact and and but I haven't reviewed any of this. So I I would ju- I would prefer to to continue this public hearing to July second, when we will all have maybe a better understanding. At least I don't have a good understanding of this. So Tricia, did you have a comment?
Well, I just have a question. So it it looks to me, just looking at this, and when I look at the GIS map, the intent ultimately is to have, to create, I mean, unless you can get like a five-hundred-foot wetlands crossing from DEM, that you would use the front part of this of this new frontage for any building location. Because once you get to the point where it gets wide, at least according. Because once you get to the point where it gets wide, at least according to the GIS map, the whole thing is about 500 feet wetlands.
No.
Well, the GIS map is, the DEM GIS map is...
Your wetlands situation?
For the DEM maps, it's in the back, it's in the far, far back reaches of the properties, the wetlands. If you took this piece, added it here, Bogomarsh Road is over here, the existing lot line is here, it's got no frontage, it's got no lot width. We're trying to connect it so that it actually has some access to the property. But the wetlands is quite a ways back in. It's at the extreme northern part of the property.
Okay, well, I'm looking at the GIS map right now at 118, and there is the front of 118, and that's...
Right, but 118 is gonna come the ultimate side. It's gonna come all the way down.
But that's my point. So that the narrow portion of the lot that you'd be creating, the 125, the 120 foot portion of the lot, that would be the likely building location, correct?
Well, we've got soil testing that's passed back in here. Behind that, on the other side of the gas easement, so we do have some...
It does widen again, the way they're proposing it. It's 120 feet in, and then it widens again.
Yeah.
And where it widens out is where they would have to build, because when you get towards the back where it turns back, where the original 118 is, is where it gets wet. So they'd be construct, basically in that, in this part right here, this is, right, it's still 113. Right.
That was part of the old 113, that's why your difference.
Land is 113. So they would be, the development would have to happen on the land that is currently part of 113, because 118 is wet.
And if I can, normally, this is what we used to call a hockey stick lot. And until I've turned blue in the face, what I used to say is, we're just, make the setback 50 feet to the other side of where it gets wide, which is what we used to do. We used to say... I don't, all I'm saying is, if you're afraid that the house is going to be on the thin part of the 120, which is a valid concern, tell us as a condition that the house has to be back 40 feet past where it widens. Because that's a fairly typical, so the house is going to be built where the house, where the lot requires no lot width variance. And a lot width variance is for neighbors. So we're gonna have a house back where it is in fact more than 175 feet. So you can restrict, we could have made a 50-foot right away. We just made it 120, so we didn't need a variance. But we couldn't make it 175, because then the math wouldn't work on the next frontage. But it's a perfectly legitimate request to say, I don't want the house on the narrow part. Can you move the front yard setback back? And we can do that.
Thank you, thank you. Now I think to call on Nathan Michael. Nathan, have you had a chance to review these plans?
I got them last week.
Okay, so we're not getting input from our own consulting engineer. I think we would be remiss if we attempted to make a decision tonight.
Can I be heard, please? I'm not trying to be difficult, but...
So, but let me, before you speak, I'd like to give my colleagues around the table here an opportunity to say whether they would like to proceed with voting tonight, or whether they would like to have an opportunity to do some more review and get Nathan's input.
I scanned Ashley's draft memo when I came in here tonight, so I am, I am slightly up to speed there. This seems pretty straightforward. I think Trish brings up a valid concern, and we do have to talk about sort of the house sighting here. But in terms of, I would just, my only question, again, there's a lot of variances being talked about. Can we just clarify for the record, the one variance that we are talking about?
The single variance we are talking about is a R60 zone requires 175-foot lot width, as measured at the front yard setback, which in this case would be the 50 feet from Bogomarsh.
And that's 120?
Right. So that is a 55-foot variance with a condition that the house be placed back where the lot exceeds. Now, as a practical matter, you can't just say where it exceeds. You have to go X feet back from the first jog.
Fifty feet beyond.
Fifty feet beyond the jog and the house.
Okay, thank you. With that being sort of the fact, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with what has been discussed, what has been presented. That's my opinion only.
And I too agree. We could hash this out tonight with the progress that's already been made. So if we have to talk a little further to clarify everything, I think we should put this to rest this evening if we could.
So I'll just raise the point, this is a minor. There's, this is not the end. There is also a final to be done. So if you have concerns, we can condition your concerns, we can work those out. Nathan can review, give comments on engineering, and we can negotiate anything that needs to be taken care of. So like, I just don't want anyone to think that if you voted tonight, that that would be the end of it. It's not. There is a final step that has to happen.
So it sounds like the only concern really is the placement of the house? And is that a condition that gets put forward that that needs to be spelled out?
It would be a condition of your preliminary plan approval. They're gonna have to come back for a building permit, and the zoning department, the building department will get a copy of the letter that says, you know, the, and Bill, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if you're gonna put this on a condition, it looks like the measurement from the street to that corner where it widens is 350?
That's correct.
So if you said the house shall be no less than 400 feet from the street, that would guarantee that that house gets put in the back.
But we don't have to, we can vote on the frontage variance this evening without having... Does that fact about the house needing to be 400 feet from, that doesn't have to be part of the vote on the variance, correct?
You, it does not have to be, but it would be a condition of your granting that variance.
Variance, okay.
I'm fine with that.
Ashley, might I suggest the one thing, rather than say 400 feet from the road, 400 feet as measured from the point where the road goes up that bound, up the boundary line? Because perpendicular might be 420, I just...
I was going to say 50 feet from the south boundary line.
Right.
That's 350 feet from Bogomarsh.
Whatever legal language makes you guys...
With same intent, same intent. I just wanna, don't wanna get in a measuring, perpendicular could be 420.
It's not a straight, it's not a perfectly straight line, yes.
So.
Chris? I'm good to move forward tonight.
Janice?
Janice, do you have any?
With, with the condition.
Okay, Dick?
Sorry?
Okay, Rosemary?
I'd like to see the plan. I think this is the match line down here. It's very faint of the extension of the 118. Am I correct, Bill? Over here.
Bill, why don't you come up and show Rosemary and whomever else needs to see the match line?
Because this is going into the land evidence books for the plans.
So this match line?
Is that match, okay. You don't, you can't hardly see it on here. So that would be the back part of there.
Certainly make that clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this gets added to...
Okay, it wasn't clear to me either.
It wasn't clear on this plan that we got. Like, my eyes are bad, but it's only here somewhere, very, very, very faint.
Exactly, that would be a condition that you clarify that, Bill, for the land evidence records.
To Ashley's satisfaction, can you do this, bud?
If my colleagues are good to go with this, I suppose I will reluctantly go along with that. We didn't, we didn't go all the way around, so I'm gonna call on Tricia. VA, okay, Steve? Okay, so now we need a motion, and it will be a conditioned motion. It will be a motion to grant the dimensional relief that's been requested, and conditional upon the placement of the house and the clarification on the plans.
For the match line specifically?
With the match line specifically. So would somebody like to make that motion? Because I'm not quite sure if I'm getting it all.
I'll take a stab at the first one. I move to grant the variance that they are asking for, with the condition that any structure be built 50 feet beyond the, was that the southern quarter? And also with the condition that the plans be updated with clarity in the match line, so that it's correct for the land evidence.
Excellent motion, VA. Better than I would have done.
Twenty-six months' worth.
Well, let's, let's do a second, and then we'll have a discussion where we may amend this motion. So Chris has seconded it. Now, I think that Rosemary may have another condition that she'd like to add to this, to this motion.
I would like a good purpose on this plan of what you're doing with merging the areas. Because the detail is not always, when you look at a land evidence plan, as you well know, Bill, we need to know what the purpose of the plan is.
Transfer proportion of lot 113 to lot 118? Do you have something specific that you'd like to...
Know what the purpose is.
How about for the purpose to add?
That's what, that's what is on the plan.
Where is it?
On the surveyor certification, just above Steve Long's signature. Purpose of survey, transfer proportion of lot 113 to lot 118. Bottom left corner.
We could certainly add...
If we would expand on that, if you have...
We could add to give frontage to the otherwise landlocked lot.
That's fine.
Right.
Yeah.
Which I think would be clearer.
Would it be appropriate also to mention that the applicant would like to build a duplex or a single-family home? Or is that irrelevant at this point?
I don't think it's appropriate at this stage, Josh, man.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, just asking.
It says existing.
I don't think we need to amend the motion under the circumstances. Okay, does anybody else have any?
The motion will need to be amended to include this.
To include a more definitive purpose.
For a purpose, right.
And also to adopt and incorporate Ashley's memorandum.
Right, with the findings of fact on the two types. Well, we're only doing the variance at the moment. So the findings of fact and the, what do you call them, findings of fact for variance? Okay, so the findings of fact that are in the memo that was provided.
Okay.
So I'm, do I have to say the whole thing, or can I just say I amend my motion to include clarity on the use and rationale for the merging of the two lots? And to include Ashley's memo of findings of fact.
Findings of fact in Ashley's memo. That's good. That's all you have to say. Okay, we have, we have an amended motion. Is there any further discussion? Does any member of the public wish to speak on this? Because a new member of the public just walked in a few minutes ago. Apparently not, okay. Hearing no further discussion. All of those in favor? Unanimous. But now we need a second motion to approve the subdivision. And that will include approval of the findings of fact in Ashley's memo. So would somebody like to make that motion? For the, this is preliminary plan.
So I'll make a motion to approve, for approval of the preliminary plan, including the findings of fact prepared by planner Ashley Sweet, issued June the 3rd, November 24th.
And so should that motion also give Ashley authority to administratively approve the final plan?
I already have it in state law, under the new rules.
Okay, okay, that's fine, just asking.
I'll second Trish's motion.
Okay, so is there any, any further discussion? We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Court. I'm next, I'm next. Thank you.
Okay. So that brings us to the third item on our agenda. And this is a concept review plan. And it is a three-lot rural compound subdivision on King Road. It doesn't actually have an address, but it's very close to General Auto. General, it's on this, General Auto was on the south side, I believe. It is 28 and a half acres in an R80 zone. And the applicant is John and Kristen Moniz. And I believe Court is also the legal counsel. So if the Monizes, the Monizes are not here.
Yeah, they are.
They are here. But you'd prefer to sit back there. Okay, so would you, Court or Tom, whoever?
I can start, and thank you. If you could bring that up, that'd be great, too. The, we wrote a purpose statement, and I hope you had the chance to read it. But basically, it's a 28.57 acre lot that is extremely unique in shape. It is, looks, it looks like a dragon. It's just from all the years of cutting off lots, I think, with frontage, that left this very irregular-shaped lot. It also has two very significant wetlands. So as a practical matter, the rural compound is really what makes a lot of sense. Because you have almost 800 or 1,000-foot of road to get to where a very thin strip that's traversable by DEM and outside the wetlands, but not wide enough to really put on a house before it opens to an area that makes sense. John and his wife are trying to build their own home there. Doesn't matter, I guess, we treat them the same, whether developers or not. But they're just trying to build their own home there. So they're keeping the lion's share of lot three for themselves, the large piece. And they're trying to set off two other pieces to get some neighbors with them and to...
Could you put that up on the screen now, Tom?
Do you have a site plan, Tom?
Yeah, there is nothing.
We don't have a site, we don't have a site folder.
We...
It's just a memo.
Everything was done with eleven sets in electronically, I know.
You drop those off then?
Yeah, do you have the ability to? Ed has it, I think.
There's no site plan in the King Road electronic folder.
Is there an ability for you to share, Ed, or me through my app? Gold screen. Again, this is a pre-application, but still, you guys should have a...
Just while they're setting up, just the easy part, that, that green, irregular shape, that's what I mean when I say it is an irregular-shaped lot. So it's, and we've gotta get that road way back up into the wetlands. But generally, before you see it, we'll just go over some of the things. On a residential, you can have a private gravel road that meets town specs. Everything is recommended that way. You then do a conventional subdivision and say how big this is. And because of the 28 acres, we've had the engineers calculate what developable land area is by subtracting all the wetlands and subtracting the drainage ditches. And that would give us an eight-lot, a nine-lot subdivision. And under the residential open space, you could do half of that. They're not trying to do half of that. They're just trying to do three, because it's trying to be their own house, and they're trying to keep the lion's share for themselves. Those parcels, when you do a rural residential, can be 80,000 square feet, or they can be 30,000 square feet. And there's three lots, Tom. What are the sizes of the three? Two of them are obviously much, much bigger than that.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, so again, Tom Pritzpich, Pritzpich Engineering Company. We, again, what we'd like to do is obviously proceed with that rural residential process, just given all the open space and the unique characteristics of the site. Okay, someone put this up there. So here we go, that's good. Again, with a significant... Again, with the significant amount of wetlands, it already has been deleted by a wetlands biologist, Brandon Fanouf of Ecosystem Solutions, did go out to the site and flag and delineate all of the wetlands. Our survey team located those, did the property line survey. So again, the plans, when the board does find them and what's in front of you for pre-application, is very accurate as far as the wetlands delineation, location, and property lines concerned. Again, but back to the question, once we did the math on a conventional subdivision, we calculated that we would be allowed for these three lots. And the first lot, again, is fairly substantial, it's about twelve acres. And then the second lot, I have calculated at about eighteen acres. So it's almost a lion's share of the remaining parcel, which includes the easterly, south and easterly portion of this section. And then the third lot is about one acre in size, which hopefully we can get that up on the screen and shared. So again, they're all single-family dwellings, again, bearing and bedroom size. We also did the soil testing with the state. So around, D E M did come down and witnessed the soil testing, they all passed water table. It was a twenty-four-inch water table, so again, it's pretty common for a site like this, but they did pass. There's no variances with that. Water table itself, they will be pre-treatment denitrified septic systems in the form of probably pressurized shallow now drain fields. Each individual house will have their own bio-retention drainage system, which is also required by the state, it's also required by the town. There's about fifteen hundred linear feet of gravel roadway, again, in a rural residential subdivision. It's required to be gravel. But what's nice about that is it shortens the required frontage and short, it shortens the square footage of the lot because what we're trying to do is preserve further disturbance of the entire site. So again, like Court, you know, mentioned earlier, I mean, we could come in with a two-mile road and break this up into multiple lots and, you know, clear-cut most of the property. But with a rural residential subdivision, we shorten the road, we keep the lots a little bit smaller, the frontage a little bit smaller, and in return, we provide more of open space. So we're kind of conserving our natural resources. Again, as we know, this is all private drinking water wells, septic, so it'll be all propane here. We would just have to figure out, okay, so we finally have it up on the report. The first lot is the one on the left, it says lot number one. Lot number two is in the bottom right corner of the screen. And the, yep, and then the remainder of the parcel is up, that's lot number three. That's the lion's share remainder of the lot. And it's intersected by wetlands. So there's an upland area where the house is, wetlands, and then another upland area up to the top of the page, which is part of lot three. We don't plan on developing that right there, we did some soil testing. But because of the access, we're leaving it as open space at this time.
Would have to cross a wetlands a second time. You can see on the far left, you'll see King Road, and you'll see that long snake-like driveway come in. When it gets up to where it takes the turn before the cul-de-sac, you can see that's the thinnest place for a wetlands crossing.
Right there?
When, yes, right there. And, and when it crosses the wetlands, you'll see that first house down on the right, right there, that's lot one. You can see that that's twelve acres because it's the large lot all the way to the, to King Road, mostly wet, but the developable area meets the standard without a variance. The second lot next to it, that avails itself a little bit of, what's the size of that?
That's about an acre. Just under an acre.
So that, remember, even though it's R80, when you do the residential rural, your lots can be thirty thousand, but it's forty, so it exceeds the smallest. But it works there to allow the lot across the street to be the rest residue remainder of the property, which is the lot that they're going to try to keep themselves. And it's a large, open area there that's also dry. Ironically, if you go up to the match line, if you did cross that wetlands, again, there's a, we just had a, there's a six-acre piece that's landlocked that abuts this. That if anybody, this lot, by definition, if you do a rural subdivision, cannot be developed, cannot be further subdivided. The road, I'd like to tell you, somebody might like to go through someday and connect to the, if we get across that, it might be the only way to make that landlocked piece. It wouldn't be subdividing this, it would be subdividing the landlocked piece. But that, that's the possibility of crossing that second wetlands.
How much of that, because it looks like, based on the aerial, there is already something coming into the property? How far does that come in?
So the existing car path?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that comes at approximately, it's about, yeah, it's about eight hundred feet.
Is that what that darker gray is?
Yes, so that's on the, so as you approach the site, on the left-hand side or the easterly side, right here, so that gray hatch?
Yep, this year.
That is the existing, I guess, car path, or I guess the site used to be logged and that was a truck.
And then it goes, that's kind of a field where it turns into that.
Right, yeah.
That's where, that's where it turns into kind of that load area.
So we're trying to mimic, again, with D E M's policies and setbacks, this will be a formal application. So it'll be, be a lengthy application because we are crossing the wetlands itself. So, I mean, we tried to model the proposed gravel roadway, it's going to be twenty-foot full width, somewhat of that path, but again, as you can see with that hatch, it's, it's in very close proximity to the flagged wetland edge. So we did have to pull it back a little bit because I don't know if D E M will allow us to get that close to the wetland edge.
So is that, it, what, it looks like a stream goes through the property. Is that a perennial or does it?
It dries up in, again, we have the applicant's here, I mean, they can speak on to actually what happens. I'd have to read, so Brandon Fanouf is the professional wetland scientist. I'd have to pull his report to look at that.
And, and is that a tributary of Adamsville Brook? Do you know, you don't know where it goes? And, but it doesn't run all year round? Okay.
According to the map, it is a tributary of, I hear it can be G S I, it does go in town.
Okay, and, and Tom, you mentioned a gravel driveway. I thought that D E M had decided that gravel can get hard-packed and turn into sort of impervious.
Correct, correct.
And that they're now recommending pebbles that are, that are smooth and that let the water info, the rainwater infiltrate.
You were talking about porous pavement?
Yes.
Correct, yeah, so there's, there's some double dichotomy. There's dichotomies and double standards, however you want to say, in the industry with the requirements from the town, the requirements from the state, and the requirements from, you know, fire departments. So we have this balance net going, but what you're saying is we, we'll use porous pavement because it's great because it acts like a sponge for stormwater. However, you need a certain groundwater table to have that act effectively. Because if it's in the water, because it's a certain section.
Very high, if it's twelve inches, it's very, very high.
Especially with the proximity of the roadway at that first section. So I don't know if that's likely, and we didn't plan on that. So we plan on putting in some sort of stone infiltration. But again, we haven't developed the plans that far, this is pre-application. So we have, we've been thinking about it, but that's something that, you know, is, is an approved B N P, but you need to have the.
There's something called a crushed, washed stone. Nathan, can you help us out on this? What is it that, that D E M is?
We talked about this on a previous application.
Yeah.
It was what the washed stuff looked like for the driveway.
Yeah, 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 okay, good, good.
Well, as a condition, I'm sure, of crossing that wetlands, D E M will dictate, or at least have to approve what we, what we put in, both as to crossing and the entire.
But, but again.
And we'll go with that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you know, that, that we're very sensitive to, to impervious because we have a lot of impaired water bodies interfered in, as you know.
Yeah, and I think what you're saying, Mr. Chair, is the state, D E M, when we talk about gravel, I mean, is it stone gravel, is it three-quarter gravel? That's different, that's porous. Is it, you know, compacted, you know?
Right.
Mixed gravel with sand, silt, and clay in it, a little bit of that? That packs to ninety-five percent. I mean, that's, our curve numbers for as the engineers, I mean, we actually model compacted gravel almost like asphalt.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't infiltrate all the time.
Yeah.
And that's what the D E M has really recognized.
Right, right.
But when we get further along, that'll be more of our analysis.
Right, right, right. Any, the only other question I had is, there have been some issues with General Auto. Does that impact on your property, Mr. and Mrs. Moniz, at all?
I don't believe so.
Have you done any testing, water testing?
No.
I imagine if we're going to live there, that might be a prerequisite to making sure that's the case. And I, and I think a self-inflicted row of abrevities or a, or a maintained hedge on that side are not something you need to put as a condition, but I guarantee it'll be there.
Yeah, no, I, I.
I'm sure there'll be a deed restriction against that guy cutting down.
That will be, that will be priority number one, I'm sure. Well, this, this is not a public hearing, but if any member of the audience has a question, I wouldn't.
I put up the aerial, just so you can see that that's, that's right on the property line.
And, and of course, anybody on the planning board. I'll go to Tricia and then I'll go to Sue Anderson.
So will you clarify for me again, when you did the calculations and subtracted the unsuitable land, and how many lots did, or how many lots did you say that you could?
We stopped it when, when you look at, and I think, I believe I put that in the purpose. Yes, we, we stopped when we got six because we're only getting three. But that requires, just to use a genuine, here, that requires the crossing of the first wetlands and the crossing of the second.
So the yield plan is here on the screen.
And what is the yield plan?
We don't have this, so what, so the yield plan is?
The yield plan is what we put together because the ordinance says that avail yourself of rural. With under three, it says you can ask for it, but we did it anyway. But the, we have to show that we could have eight so that we are only asking for four because it's half plus open space. So I think we've. We're only asking for three, so we drew it as six bigger ones rather than crossing every one.
We could have yielded more, but we stopped at six.
Okay, so, so, so you have the, so you have the yield plan. And you're asking for a rural compound then? Because we have different, there's different requirements for a rural subdivision.
It's a rural.
You're asking for a rural compound.
Yes, less than five lot.
Just to be clear on that.
Yes.
And the, you mentioned something about future subdivision. There is language in the, in the rural residential code that says, once you're granted a rural, any kind of, whether it's a compound or a subdivision, then that's it. Then you, there's no further subdivision of the lots going forward.
And I, I understand completely, and we're completely fine with that. My question is, is that when I think of subdivision, it means we take this piece and we cut off another lot. What I'm telling you is we are bringing a road to within a hundred, couple of hundred feet of a six-acre landlocked piece. The question is whether they could extend the road, not further subdivision of this lot, but we could give them access. We, if you say we can't give them access, we have no, we have no business with them, we have no agreement with them. I'm just saying, people that have six-acre landlocked pieces are dying, and planning boards used to. We used to worry about how to get roads to places, but.
You're talking about which parcel, this one oh two?
One oh three, one oh four.
I believe it's up in that, see there, see that?
One oh four?
Right there, yep.
That one?
I believe that's a landlocked parcel.
One oh four is, yep, correct.
That's owned by M and R Feet.
You're bringing, you're bringing a roadway somewhere in here. They would have to, again, cross this wetland.
That would be a separate wetland.
And this looks kind of wet.
There's a lot of nice, dry land in there.
No, that's upland.
This is upland here?
Yes, that is all upland confirmed.
But that's open space as a result of this.
But they'd have to bring the road across the wetland
Correct.
through their open space and into this lot.
So the question was, do, do, they'd have to come back here. But rather than say, I guarantee we're not subdividing, but if somebody wanted to put that road in, do you want, they'd have to come back here? I don't believe that's a violation of subdivision because it's just putting a road through it. And on the conservation easement, preserving the right to put the road through, might be good planning.
The road will be private, correct?
Road is completely private, and if, if the one house or whatever joined it, they'd have to join the homeowners association, which would be our, you know, the more people having a road, the worse, but the more people paying for a road that long, the better. You know?
Any, any other comments or questions?
Can we go back to the plans, sorry, I apologize?
No, no problem. You want the proposed plan or this is the yield?
The proposed plan, just like going back to General Auto. I just, I'm trying to understand the distance, like, I, I live on Deer Run, which is on the other side of King. And when there was that situation, I thought there were bombs in my backyard. So I can only imagine how loud this is, and I would just be cognizant of that in building all three houses, which look like they're going to be.
This is right, right on the property.
Yeah, so I would just, as you're planning this, take that into consideration for as long as that's going to be there. That's, it's, I mean, I hear it, like I said, Deer Run, just on the ground.
So you would expect at the bare minimum some deed restrictions on that lot that abuts it, that pushes that house as far forward towards the cul-de-sac and leaves the largest set of trees and buffer for the benefit of their own home. Because the more trees, I would assume, the less noise, so I'd have it open.
In theory, just in theory, while a compound doesn't require a certain amount of space, do you think that applicants would consider a conservation easement on some portions of it just to make sure that it stays in its natural state? Or, I mean, they may have plans to use it for farming or something else, so.
No, I, I think there's, well, I, I think there's a couple of easy things, you know, all of it, all of lot one that's wet, whether it's conservation easement or not, the upland on the backside. There, what they hope to do is to have some land around the house. And I think it would be the nature of the conservation easement, if they can have a barn and have horses on it and reserve that, that's one thing. Natural state with trails, I don't think it's planned to farm it or to cut it down. Especially that upland area that is clearly dry and far away. I can't see if they put a barn or garage because they're going to cross the wetlands. From a guy that's a barn owner, the closer he is to your house, the less work you have to do to get there and get back and haul water and all the things you have to do.
I do think it's a, it's a worthwhile point, just for the record, I live on King Road. I'm just further west of General Auto. Yeah, it's a nice place with lots of, I mean, lots of wooded area. So anything that we can do to try and maintain that would, would be welcome, so.
I can put together and talk to them about a conservation plan that might be a little different than the most restricted kind. I like the ones where you're allowed to cut trails, not completely, completely open.
I would.
There's a, there's a fair amount of wildlife on, on King Road, for sure.
I think we appreciate it, we're also, you know, we're working very hard to try and preserve water quality, both for the wells that you're obviously going to have for these houses and, you know, and, and also, you know, for, for the sake of Adamsville Brook, which is an impaired water body right now.
Trails.
So what we can do to.
That's really the plan, except for around.
They're required to submit an open space management plan, so.
Yeah, it's just not, the difference is, it's just not public open space.
Right.
It's private, but it's still an open space management plan to say what would be done and what isn't done. Most of those trails, I think, are in there, so we could probably maybe map out the trails and show you how we just want to maintain kind of what's there. I, I don't know that the bikes are going to be allowed to ride on it that are there now, but.
We, we, we would appreciate that very much.
Was any of this property paid in the past? Or did M and R's was east of here, too?
Eight?
Eight, I don't think there's, it's all.
No, it's all brush now.
The only kind of pasture is there at the end of the road.
There's a lot of quad trails and stuff.
Yeah, it's mostly bike and quad trails and.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to ask questions, make comments? Very good, well, we'll, we'll see you back and we'll put you on, oh. we'll, we'll see you back, and we'll put you on, oh, Sue Anderson would like to make a comment.
I would. Can you put the GIS map, please? All right. You see the, where the green, green is, right?
Green dot.
Green dot. Okay. So, you go down and right at the, right, keep going, right there. It's either on that side or across the lot on your side, there is a historic cemetery at Smitten Heart. You can't see it on here, but it's, it's supposed to be, like, where that round circle is, where the pond is, there. And then up, no, 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 no.
Right there?
The dark, the dark spot, right there. And then up, it's either, it's either right at the border.
Do you know if it's on your property?
It's like, maybe in the trees. It's supposed to be around that area.
Well, well.
Is it labeled?
So, was that on General, General Auto's?
It's Smitten, it's Smitten Heart. Now, the people that I've been talking to, they used to play there when they were kids, and they're trying to tell me where it is, and they were trying to find it with one of our Historic Cemeteries Commission members. And they, they did find part of it, but they didn't find the Smitten Heart stone, but they did find, like, where a wall was, and then it's.
Who actually owns that land, do you know?
No. Well, I, I don't know. That's, that's got to be General Auto, but they were not on General Auto land when they were trying to find it. They were trying to find, I don't know. But it's supposed to be right around there, either on, either on your land or right on that border. But I just wanted to make, let you know that there is a, there is a historical cemetery supposedly in that area.
It's a, it's a stone-walled cemetery, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, any, anybody else? I think we're fine, and we, we look forward to seeing you. I guess we'll try to get you on the agenda for July 2.
Well, provided that you file an application, we're not just putting you on the agenda. I just want to make that clear.
And therein lies the problem with, with potential changing from R-80.
And Tom, you might want to correct the bottom right in the corner of your plan. The proposed of this plan should be the purpose of this plan.
But I should make it up for you, though.
I think you do it on purpose, just so she has something to tell you.
Is it possible to get?
I'm just seeing if it marked that.
Apply for master plan July 2.
Again, I mean, we just looked through the master plan checklist, and we have, again, most of the items, the wetland delineations, soil testing, survey. I think we just cleaned up the plan a little bit and looked at the master plan checklist and dropped that off.
I'm not feeling wise, because there's a race to try to, we don't, nobody knows necessarily the effect of a change of zoning that's going to have on these plans. So, everybody's trying to do it, and then the check, but the checklist sometimes requires things, but it's going to be difficult to do that timely. But you've seen it conceptually. Hopefully, we can.
Okay.
Maybe I'm missing something, but why would we be, why would you be doing a master plan? This is only three lots.
Well, whatever the, our.
So, it'd be minor preliminary.
Minor preliminary.
Well, I guess the problem, right, is just because, so we have to file a formal DEM application, which takes a little while. So, I don't know if it would.
We won't have the results back.
To have the master plan or some sort of vested application. Open discussion here, because again, the, the DEM form application is going to take a wetland habitat analysis and some lengthy biological analysis, and then permitting, and then that's a public hearing as well with the state. So, that's going to take a few, three, three to four months at least.
So, all things have been worked for a long time.
So, to have preliminary, we need all our DEM permits in hand.
May change with this swath.
So, I don't know if.
Unless you can file some things and continue to give you time to work on it while we get the master plan, now that you've seen it.
Right.
I don't think conceptual grandbothers us.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We'll, we'll, we'll see you when we see you. But it won't be us who are delaying.
No.
No.
We have no control over DEM.
But you do control your checklists. And for, historically.
The AO controls the checklist.
But historically, we've sometimes had checklist items, especially subject to DEM, done after the fact. Now, with a checklist that says that's been done in the past, it creates time constraints that are extremely difficult when you're voting on how to swath a piece that you wouldn't care about this piece necessarily, but it may have negative effects on people that are thousands of dollars into their designs. It's just a paradox.
We, I think we're sensitive to that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Moniz. And so, we have other items on our agenda tonight. Number four, number four is, is at, I think, Michael Monte is the, is the legal counsel for the applicant, and Tom Principi is the civil engineer, and this is 439 Main Road. We're back in North Tiverton, in the neighborhood of the historic chapel that we discussed a bit ago. This is the old Hicks Farmhouse site, and what is being proposed is to replace the historic home with eight townhouse units in one building in a neighborhood business district. I believe we're talking about a two-acre parcel. It would require the raising of the historic building, and, and it is also a comprehensive permit project. I believe it's a comprehensive permit project, which requires 25% deed restricted affordable. So, you'd have to take two of the eight units and deed restrict those as affordable. Have you actually gotten permission from Rhode Island Housing to, I believe, I believe that you have to get permission in order to go with a comprehensive permit? And you have that?
It, yes, we're presently in, in the process of obtaining a letter of eligibility.
That's what I meant to say, a letter of eligibility for the comprehensive permit project. So, that, that, that hasn't been determined quite yet, because usually, the ones that have come before us have been much larger than eight units. So, having said that, I would just invite you, whoever's speaking, please speak into the mic, and so who would, whoever would like to present the project?
Certainly, yeah. And I, I think we can be brief this evening. It's not a terribly complicated proposal. I'm Michael Monte, on behalf of the applicant, 439 Developers LLC. John Lennon, to my right, is the principal of that company, and then Mr. Principi is here this evening as well. The existing conditions of, of this site, two-acre lot, neighborhood business district, existing two-family structure, which is a historic home that was constructed in the mid to late 1700s, I believe. To some extent, it's in a state of, it's getting to a state of disrepair, I'll say. The plan is to demolish the existing structure, the barn and the shed. A demolition permit has already been granted, so the applicant currently has the authority to take down the structure, but he hasn't at this time. Mr. Chairman, I see you.
There, there, we actually have an ordinance that the building official may not be aware of, that requires, I believe it's a six-month period of delay before any demolition can take place.
Correct, yes. And I, I believe Mr. Lennon received approval, I'm not sure how many, past the, the six months. He made the application for that some time ago, but right now, the, the structure is still standing. So, the plan is to put an eight-unit multifamily under the zoning code for this lot. If there was no affordable component, six units would be allowed by right, assuming there were no moratorium in place. With the affordability component, eight units would be allowed. It's currently anticipated that Unit One and Unit Eight, which are the two units on either end of the project, are intended to be the affordable units at this time, although this still is a conceptual phase. Units two through seven, the units in the middle, would all have garages underneath. So, no garages on Units One and Eight. Most of the parking is in the rear, as you can see, and each unit is presently designed to be a two-bedroom. The, there's already been a fair amount of engineering work that's gone into this, because the applicant has been looking at a number of plans for, for some time now. And I would like Mr. Principi to briefly comment on stormwater, septic, and that, the curb cut that's being proposed. And then I think we'll just open it up to any questions and feedback from the board, as it is a conceptual review.
Sure, I'll just be brief. Again, Mr. Chair, Tom Principi, Princip Engineering Company. Again, yeah, this, this application or this site has been in our office for a while. It's been through a couple of owners, and Mr. Lennon here is our recent owner. We've been working with him and his team for quite a while. So, again, in the engineering aspect, we do have a Class One certified boundary, topographical survey, utility. We all know where this property is on Main Road and what kind of utilities we have and don't have. Again, no sewer. We do have public water available to us. We did our Rhode Island DEM soil testing on the entire property, and we are proposing our septic system, or OWTS as it's known, to the top of the page, which is the right-hand side of the site, or north, however you want to determine that. And that will be to service 18 bedrooms, again, just to service all the two-bedroom units itself. The drainage system, it is a bioretention basin that is actually 100% in full compliance with DEM stormwater rules and regulations with stormwater quality, recharge, and volume. And we submitted this to DEM just to see what they would say, and that we got a permit within three to four weeks with no comments. So, we have a lot of drainage analysis and stormwater reports. That, that actually was done, just because it's been in our office so, so long, we wanted to kind of go through that process. So, again, you know, I know it's a little backwards, and we told the client, but we have no problem, you know, if there's a change or if the board feels differently to modify that. But I think it's a good assurance with the board that DEM, you know, stormwater and, and septic system had no issues with, with the proposal, with the driveway and with all the drainage requirements. We also reached out to Department of Transportation. As you know, Main Road is a state highway, so we did have a curb cut application in with the Department of Transportation. You know, one of the things that we really are trying to do with the entrance here is to try to line up with Durfee Road. As you can see, right across the main entrance, we have Durfee Road, so we didn't really want to offset that intersection, right, for safe vehicular travel. So, that is lined up within two or three feet of the center line of Durfee Road. With the entrance, it is two-way, in and out. Guest parking is, so with the topography of the site, if, if you're familiar with it, it does slope from front to back, about eight to 10 feet, so there is some pretty good slope. So, the way we worked with the architect on this is, those proposed buildings are right on that slope there. So, there is a grade change. But rather than bringing in fill and manipulating the site and retaining walls, we're building to the site, and those houses are set into the slope. So, the, the front portion of that parking, for the guest parking, is on the high side, and we will have an ADA compliant parking space, which is required. And they are drive-under garages with two, four, so six of those will have drive-under garages. The two outside units, which are the affordable units, do not have a garage. And then all of the overflow parking is, is in the rear, as outlined on the plan itself. So, it does try to mimic the, the proposed grades. We do not have any hard piping here. This is all overland flow on top of the pavement with the curb. And then we have a leak-off with a four-bay for our stormwater quality control, which then drains out to the bioretention basin. So, I don't know if those, I don't believe those actual details and nuts and bolts were submitted for the board this evening, because this is just a pre-application, but I just wanted to let the board know, all of those details and analysis was, were done and reviewed by the, by the state.
Thank you. So, questions, comments? Tricia.
So, the bioretention basin is designed how? Is it, is it like a stone-lined basin?
It's a planted basin with the engineered soil. Yes, yes.
So, you mentioned 18 bedrooms. I counted 16.
I'm sorry. That's it. Yep. Does it have an overall capacity, or is it, or is it designed? It is over-sized, but, but on the permit, so we don't have the permit yet, it will be 16. So, thank you for the clarification. It is 16, yeah.
So, your, your site is a tad under two acres.
1.99.
So, you've got roughly two acres.
Yeah.
But you'll need, you'll need a OWTS leaching field that will be fairly large.
Correct, yes.
And you've already, and has, has DEM actually given you a permit for?
So, they gave us a permit for the old, again, this has been around our office for a while. So, they gave us a permit for the previous design, which I believe was 12 or 14 bedrooms. Correct me if I'm wrong, right?
I thought it was 12 and then 10 employees.
Yeah, it was like 12 bedrooms. Again, it's been around our office for a while. So, there is an OWTS permit from our office. I can comfortably say it was designed for 12 bedrooms. So, with this design, again, we're just increasing it slightly more. We haven't submitted that permit yet. We're just waiting for the board's feedback. Again, it's pre-application. I tried to pump the brakes on all of the permits, right? But it's a denitrified, pretreated septic system with a bottomless sand filter. So, I know we're all familiar with those types of systems.
Right. And, and you're familiar, I'm sure you're familiar, Tom, with the Tiverton Mount Hope Bay watershed plan that came out about a year ago. And, and also, please keep in mind that, that Tiverton is in compliance with state LID.
Right, right.
Standards.
Right.
So, we'll be looking, Nathan, our consulting engineer, will be looking at all of that. I was a little, we didn't see any architectural renderings, and I know it's early stages for that. But I would like to remind everybody that we have design standards, design standards in the neighborhood business district, and we want something, if you're, if you're going to tear down an historic property, we would not like that replaced with, with a rather unsightly set of townhouses. And it looked to me, just looking at the footprint, that you're, that you're looking at garages on the, on the front facade of the building. They're on the rear.
Rear, the, the driver.
We're going to, we're going to pay, I'm going to pay a lot of attention to the design, so we're, we're going to require, I hope.
So, the garages are on the back side?
Correct. Drive-on there in the back. Yes, yep.
If I, if I could, we did have a six-unit iteration that we were working on right before we switched to the eight unit. This won't be what we're submitting, but if you wanted to get a snapshot of what we're talking about, this might suffice to show you.
And it would also be helpful, because if you really don't like it, that would be good for us to know now.
We, we wouldn't mind all the input, disregarding the colors. But this would be the front of the buildings, all coming across. This is the front doors, and up above would be the bedrooms. The lower section depicts the rear of the building. You would drive around the back. You'd face in, there'd be garages underneath. We're planning to have decks above the garages. We've angled them to the southern rotation of the sun. It would stagger and give privacy to those rear decks and give a little bit of contrast along the front. All these buildings will fit in a rectangle. All these buildings will fit in a rectangle. We're not putting them at a slope down the hill, but they're all offset a little bit slightly facing southwest, if you will. So you're only going to see two stories in the front, standard front door, maybe two steps into a little portico with the windows up top, maybe a couple of bedrooms from memory. When you drive around the back, it's a little bit taller, but like Mike said, we're taking advantage of the slope that we were given. So you're not going to see a lot from the front yet. It'll be a little bit larger.
Do you want to pass? We may. And just to clarify as well, these aren't... Each... They're staggered as well, correct, John?
Yes.
So it doesn't create one long facade. Each one is offset, so there's a little bit of architectural complexity there that's a little more interesting. And this, again, was drawn up when we initially... When the client was initially looking at a six-unit proposal.
One of those is a three-bedroom, so if you notice, that one's a little bit wider. That's what you're saying. I can pass this the other way.
So while people are looking at what's being passed around, does anybody else have any questions or comments?
So can you... Can you remind me, what is the determining factor between six versus eight?
So due to the state law relative to affordable housing, you can get a twenty-five... You can get an additional density allowance. I think the Tiverton code and the state law says five per acre, so you can go up.
Michael, we don't have inclusionary zoning with the comprehensive permit.
Yeah, and he's not referring to the inclusionary zoning provision because the town got rid of that. But the state law changed so that it actually steps the density based on whether or not you can tie in to public water and sewer. And it... I think I left it open. So for properties that are connected... This, I'm looking at one eye. It's five units per acre. And then as you increase in terms of being able to connect to both, then you get nine, and then you get twelve. And so we would be looking here at the five... I'm assuming you're going off of the five units per acre.
Correct. So we're not going to what I think... I think we are likely allowed... Would potentially be allowed more than an additional two units. But we feel very confident pursuant to the formulas that an additional two units is allowed and would satisfy the comprehensive permit regulations. But I can certainly draw up what would be the max that would be allowed, if that's helpful to the board.
Well, it's based on percentage. So the more... Obviously, the more you provide in terms of affordable units, the more density you get. When you give the minimum at 25%, which is what you're proposing, the two out of the eight units, you get... It says at least. So the minimum that you can grant in a comprehensive permit for that situation would be the five units per acre.
And is that... Is that dependent on public water and public sewer connection, or just one?
Because there's no public sewer. So there's another... Sort of the next provision down says...
It's either... Then it would be the three units per acre. So it would be number four. If it's an either-or, and you're giving 25%, then it's three units per acre.
That's correct. So in any event, an additional two units to the six that would be ordinarily allowed under the density provisions would comply with the density bonus allowance.
I have a quick question about that because I know we talked about this, and we... You and John and I, I think, went around a couple of times about talking about the calculation of that.
Yes.
Density bonus. And I did this very quickly, and it's very possible that I'm just missing something. But you take the density... You take the requirement of the nearest residential district. That's the thirty... The R30 district. You're on... You're half R30, half neighborhood business. And that would give you the 40,000 plus 10,000 for each unit above two units. And that's how you would essentially calculate the number of units that you get because you're doing all two bedrooms, so you don't have to add on that 5,000 additional square feet for any of your units.
Yeah, so I'm reticent to sort of make any statements with respect to precisely how we connected the density because there was back and forth between my office and Todd's office, and a lot of correspondence went into figuring that out.
So let's just agree we'll look at that again and refresh our memory because I want to say it's been at least six months.
That's fine, but at some point, you know, we do feel like the... It's been weighed in on from the town that the density formula that applies results in a six-units. I mean, we're happy to, you know, provide those correspondence and that analysis that was performed.
I'm sure we have all of it. I'm just saying it's been a long time since we talked about that. I need to go back and refresh my memory. Because I think when I did it really fast, I didn't come up with the same thing. But again, I did that really fast, and I need to go back and look at what we went back and forth on.
Certainly.
I felt that was going to be a simple question.
It was many months of back and forth, and that's why we've actually had several plans that the client has produced and looked at that didn't get before this board because we were looking into that.
So I just had one other comment, and that's about public water. You're in the North Tiverton Fire District for public water, but I'm just alerting you to the fact that North Tiverton Fire District is very close to capacity, and they are struggling now with updating their computerized hydraulic model so that... So what they need to do is to take projects that will have a fairly significant impact. And I think yours would probably fit that because you've got, you know, eight townhouses and sixteen bedrooms to run that through their computerized model to see what impact that has on the rest of the district. And, you know, we're in active discussion with North Tiverton right now because we're concerned that they have enough water capacity to supply water to the business park. They're not quite sure they do. And they're wondering whether or not they're going to have the water capacity to supply some of the projects that have already been approved by the planning board but not yet built, such as Pecasset Reserve, 275 units, or that have come before the planning board and are under review by the planning board. We have some very large comprehensive permit projects. So that's going to be an issue that you should be aware of, and you need to... But this will not be a private arrangement between the applicant and North Tiverton Fire District. The town will be getting involved in this.
I have one comment on the... You're showing the zone... We know this is a split zone, and you're showing that in the middle, but then you put it again back here on the property line. And I don't think that's accurate, right?
I'll check again. It's been a while since we did this survey as well, so in fairness, I'll check that.
Unless I'm wrong, and they actually did follow a property line on this one and went backwards.
It might be.
Most of the time, they just... They measured from the road and went through the middle, so just...
Well, I've seen it both ways, too, but I'll check that.
Check that.
So Ashley, are you saying that the entire lot, the entire two-acre lot, may not all be in neighborhood business?
I don't know what I'm saying. Let's see what zoning does.
Actually, yeah, if you put a tab on right now.
I looked up zoning, and it showed that the entire two...
Yeah, the zoning line jogs around the property line.
It's like two different people did it? And one person followed property lines and the other one didn't?
So we are showing the correct zone.
Okay.
So the entire thing is in neighborhood business?
Yes.
Yes, that was what I thought.
Mr. Chairman, I can just double back. You mentioned the water. I did get the letter already. It was one of the things that we just... It was on our punch list for... I thought I was coming into a different meeting a few months ago, so I already met with Tiverton Water. I do have that letter that you requested.
On a six-unit.
Technically, it's on a six... I'm sorry. Good, correct. It's on a six-unit, but I do have the letter.
So it'll need to be updated, obviously. But all sort of indications from what Tom's office has done with the EM and what John has done with the town indicate that we should have adequate supply and meet the applicable regulations.
Yes, but the planning board, I think, will insist that North Tiverton Fire District not simply give you a letter saying, "We're fine with the water, no problem. We're going to want to see the results of a hydraulic model test." We're going to want to see that, just as we insisted on seeing that when Mr. Harkins was before the planning board with the 275 units. And in fact, that applicant actually paid the cost of creating a computerized hydraulic model for North Tiverton Fire District. So we're going to insist on... I hope we're going to insist on that. It's actually in our subdivision regulations. So just a warning there. And Ashley and I will be... And Todd will be sitting down with North Tiverton Fire District to discuss a whole bunch of issues, not any particular development in mind, but just how we... How the town interrelates with North Tiverton because they are chartered by the state, so they are independent. But that's been a problem all over the state, as a matter of fact. Just mentioning that. So no nasty surprises. So thank you. Is any... Does anybody else have any comments or questions about this? Tricia.
I just have one comment. You're fresh analysts. I realize it's a little hard to see looking at something this black and white. And the only thing that I would say to you is this. Townhouses in particular sometimes can look fabulous when they're built. And five or 10 years down the road, they start to look a little dated. I'm sure you've seen some. And as much as we can, we are encouraging development on Main Road to sort of look, you know, take on the architectural characteristics of something that's kind of classically traditionally New England. So as much as you have an opportunity for windows, or trim, or colors, or things that are just, you know, kind of classic New England looking, I think that that would probably go a long way with the board. And so as I said, you know, that is kind of the goal for Main Road and, you know... And for you as an owner or whoever owns it in the future, you know, those things tend to look less dated because they're just... And then the style is like, you know, it fits there, right? And so that would be, you know... Any thoughts that way on, like I said, colors, trim, window styles, you know, what the doors look like, as much as you can head in that direction?
So my impression, looking at your architectural rendering, is sort of like any place USA. What you have provided for us, and I know it's just a, you know, just... We're at the beginning stages here, I think is not really consistent with the design standards for neighborhood business in our form-based code. And we have a big, thick booklet giving you all kinds of guidance and direction. When the artist community was built in Tiverton called Sandy Woods Farm, the architect for that was Union Studios. And we talked to them, and they really worked with the town to create homes, some of which, most of which are multifamily homes, that looked like a small New England town. They... With historic characteristics of a small southern New England town. And that development looks like it's always been in Tiverton. It's very, very attractive. Union Studios did the same thing with Pecasset Reserve and gave us some really nice architectural features. So I would encourage you to... Particularly since you're tearing down the last... The oldest home north of Route 24 in the town of Tiverton. You're tearing that down. Give us something a little nicer than what you passed around. And we can talk about this later. But we're looking for something that, when people pass by... We're trying to frankly clean up that whole area, make it more attractive, more attractive for nice businesses to locate there. So I think it's important that we get something that really looks nice.
I have a question. Looking at the end units, one and eight, and those being the affordable units without the garage, how do... Can I only get into that unit from the front?
No, we haven't worked on the... Excuse me. We haven't worked on the back egress yet. They may well be walkout basements. They may also be a knee wall, depending what the slope gives us again, but similar to like a raised ranch, you have like a garden level, and you still have the two levels above that. There may be a retaining wall. There'll certainly be a rear egress. The parking is in the rear. They really would want to enter from the rear.
Yeah, I mean, it's just shown right now that like the only way I can get there is from the front door.
Good point.
And I just want to kind of... Words of caution that when you're sticking them on the end and you're clearly not giving them a garage, I feel like we're starting to wade into like not integrating them into the rest of the development, so just be careful with how you do that.
Besides working with Rhode Island Housing, I have another project in Warren, but we have Molina Lodge from... She's the Pawtucket Housing Director.
I know Molina.
Well, she'll be on board with us here, and I've already run this by her. She's on board with us. The end levels, just to be honest, you get the end windows, too, so they're actually...
I know end units are typically more desirable. I just want to make sure that they're not obviously getting less, like it's obvious they don't have a garage. By these plans, it doesn't look like I can get to the back of the building. So just, again, you know, words of caution.
They'll be cleaned up, but they'll be light.
If Molina doesn't like it, she'll tell you. I know that.
Oh, she will. Thank you.
So this is not a public hearing, but would any member of the public like to weigh in very briefly? I see Sue Anderson's hand up.
I have not been of the historic... The Historic Preservation Advisory Board has not been notified that a demolition permit has been pulled. We were supposed to be. First of all, this property was bought by Samuel Hicks in 1732. This is the oldest house north of 24, as Mr.... As the chair has said. I would like to know... I don't know if I can ask this, but why you didn't think about an adaptive reuse, using the building as is? Which, I mean, from outside, it looks fine. I would... If the demolition goes forward, first of all, I would like to ask the planning board to weigh in on this, that if the water... If there is a water issue, and to not allow the demolition to happen until the water issue has been resolved. So we save that house. Because if there's a problem with the water and they can't have the water, then this development won't happen.
I don't think we can do that legally. The building official can't issue a demolition permit.
All right.
We could ask politely, but we can't insist on anything.
Then the other thing that I would like to ask, which we did for the Brayton House...
Exactly.
Is to have PAL in, have a PAL survey. And I would, as Historic Preservation Advisory Board, I would like to go on that survey as I did with the Brayton House.
So what we did when Brayton Solar wanted to tear down a home built in the early 1700s, we, we requested, and they granted our request for an archi, a survey by an archaeological firm to take, to go in there, take pictures of the exterior, the interior, and then, and then do a description of the historical features of the property. We would probably, it would be up to the board, of course. But I would certainly recommend that we do the same for this property as well. I don't think it was terribly expensive. We, we hired Public Archaeological Resources of Pawtucket. And they know Tiverton well and do good work.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Jamie, do you have brief comment, a brief comment or a question? No argumentative?
I wasn't argumentative before. Now I'm being argumentative, I was sarcastic. There is a difference.
Well, we don't allow either one of those two things.
Well, I didn't know. I knew you didn't allow arguments, but I didn't know you didn't allow sarcasm. Seen that in the rules, written it away.
So state your name and address.
Oh, let me do it this time. Jamie French, Craig Avenue. I think this is a sad day for Tiverton. You know, I think that it's sad that the town of Tiverton has issued a demo permit. I think it's sad that they didn't follow the rules and notify the Historic Commission. I think it's a sad day that you chose to tear down the remaining part of our history. And poof, North Tiverton no longer has any visual history of anything. It's a, 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 a building that can make it 250 years, but can't make it through being used what it was originally built for, which is a home on Main Road. And it's a sad day for Tiverton. That it's just, it's just terrible. And it's sad that you couldn't re, there was a, there were people that wanted, there was someone who wanted to buy this house. And they wanted to, there's a list of people in Rhode Island. And they keep a list of people who look for homes like this to totally preserve them and live in them. And there was a buyer for this house. And they were beaten out by the day from the last buyers when Mr. Towers had bought it. But there was someone who was interested. And there's, there's lists of people. And it's sad that these people aren't given a chance to let the history of Rhode Island, the history of Tiverton continue.
Thank you, Jamie. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, now, so when you get, when you get an application, we'll get you on an agenda as quickly as we can. So.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you all. Thank you. So that brings us to Agenda Item Number Five, which is Planning Board. And the first item here on Five A is, is to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,000 for a, and, for a consultant to come to a meeting of the Town Council and to serve as a resource person for a possible change in zoning that would involve an R-120 district and also a conservation program to build upon the rural residential. And that person is well-known to a lot of us. He was a senior manager at Ry Dem and, and more recently has been at Grow Smart Rhode Island. And that is Scott Millar. He, he has offered to come to Tiverton and in service a resource person so that if any questions come up about these zoning changes at the upcoming hearing, which is scheduled for June 24, he's offered to do that for $200. But I thought, just, just to be on the safe side, that we would authorize up to $1,000. We have $5,000 remaining in our account number, budget account number 1070. And that line item is entitled Professional Technical Services. We're lucky to get Scott for, for $200. He is really, really, really very good. And can answer, can field any question that would come up. So I'm requesting that we authorize this. By the way, our budget year is almost over. It ends June 30th. Is it June 30th? I think it is. So, and we have mu, and we have money left over. So we're not going to need anything more, I don't think, for the rest of the month. So I would make a motion to authorize the planning board to, to expand up to $1,000 for Professional Technical Services for, for Scott Millar. So moved. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, any questions?
I just have a question.
Sure.
Are we, are we budgeting for the cushion, so to speak, in the event that we need him at more meetings for more discussions?
That's why I'm suggesting $1,000 as opposed to the 200. 200 is, you know, he lives in Exeter.
He, he also did offer future, like thinking, just, I'd want full disclosure, that should you adopt conservation design, that he would come do a training for the planning board on how to go through that 10-step design process, which would also come from that same pot of money. So I just wanted to also mention that as well.
And I, and I have actually been through Scott Millar training sessions, and he is really, really, really very good.
I think it's a, I think it's a good idea, and I think it's a good idea to commit that funds now while we still have it, because we don't know what we'll get next season. But I also do think, we do need to check with the council and find out at that meeting on the 24th, what they would like, if anything, in terms of anybody speaking. And, you know, so maybe Scott Millar would be speaking, or maybe he would only be there in the event that there were
Questions.
Questions for him.
So, yeah.
So we do need to.
Clarify that.
Clarify and not, if I didn't do a presentation that we have.
Yes. So my, my, I mean, in speaking with him initially, that he said, "I'll do, you know, I'll do a presentation on basically conservation development. I can come to the hearing, I can answer questions." But as we've talked about it a little bit more, I think the, I wanted to wait for you to, to make the decision on spending the funds. If you expend the funds, then the next thing I would want to do is immediately reach out to Scott, also reach out to the council and the administrator, get a better understanding of exactly how they're going to conduct that hearing, and make sure that we give him advance notice of whatever, we're all on the same page, so that when he gets there, he knows what the game plan is. Whether it's a full presentation, or if he's just there to answer questions. He is the, he is the person for conservation design. He helped write the manual. He was the person at DEM who spearheaded the effort. I mean, he, there's, I don't think there's anyone in the state of Rhode Island that knows it better than he does, so.
Could we encumber the money? Like the Scott Millar, rather than lose it at the end of June? Encumber it, maybe the Scott Millor, Millar account? I don't know.
Well, no, if we.
That was actually going to be a question of mine, like.
Yeah, if we, well, if we vote, if we vote this money, not just, I don't know what the cost of the training would be for a day.
Same, basically.
So if we vote for this, if we vote for this money for both participation at the public hearing as well as training for the planning board, if we vote on that now, then we encumbered it. And it's, even if we don't spend it until July, then we're good.
Okay. The agenda only has for the presentation at the Town Council, though.
So, so we have a, a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing those in favor? I think it's unanimous.
And you want to put it on the July agenda, presuming conservation development is approved? So we can approve monies for training?
We've already approved $1,000.
Okay. The agenda only says for presentation to the Town Council.
Right, so we have to.
Okay, so put it, put it on the agenda, we'll put it on the agenda again.
For training.
Yeah, for training. But we.
$1,000 for training.
$1,000. Okay. Okay. So the, so B and C are basically the same thing. So on June 24, there will be a joint meeting. The planning board and Town Council, we need to get a quorum, because we need to go into session at that meeting. And so we're just putting it on the agenda tonight so that everybody can put that on their calendar. And we'll be following up later, actually asking people to make a commitment. So, I mean, some people may have travel plans, some people may have, you know, family situations, whatever, and can't come. But, but hopefully we'll get a quorum of five people.
Well, it would, it would be good to know now, if you definitely know you can't be there. Obviously, as Stu said, stuff comes up. But the reason that you need a quorum is because there is an amendment to the comprehensive plan that accompanies this. And in order to amend the comprehensive plan, the planning board has to hold a public hearing. And so the design of this essentially is to do that public hearing as a joint public hearing between the Town Council and the planning board. So you need to, in order to have that joint hearing, the planning board has to have a quorum on the 24th. So if you can't come and you know it, say so now, please. Obviously, we know stuff happens, but.
I cannot. I, I will not be here.
Okay.
I'll be in Alaska.
Okay. I know someone else who just went there.
So, does anybody else know for sure that they can't be? So we've got eight potential. Okay. Well, we will be following up. I'm going to ask Ed if he would follow up to make absolutely certain so that we're, we don't get there on the 24th and get embarrassed. And we did need Ashley advised that we make some changes to our comprehensive community plan. Just minor wordsmithing to, to, to bring the comprehensive plan a little more into alignment with what we have already agreed to do with respect to larger lot zoning in certain parts of town and conservation development, building upon our rural residential. So that's what we're, that's what we're doing. And I think you've all got a copy. I know I've got a copy. Ed, did you make sure everybody had a copy of the, of the comprehensive plan amendments that we're proposing?
Of the comprehensive plan amendments?
Yes. Ashley, Ashley.
Yes.
Last Thursday, so maybe not.
Those were sent out.
Yeah.
Did it work?
Yes.
I, 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 I think you did, Ed, because I have a copy, a hard copy.
I have an electronic, but it was distributed.
If you don't have it, just contact Ed, he'll get it to you.
No, that's the, it's a, it was a Word document.
It's a, it's a Word document with stuff crossed out in new language, put in, and Ashley put together. So, so several of us had input into it.
Is there any opportunity to make minor wordsmithing changes at this point, or is that locked in?
For the, for that amendment?
Yeah, for the comp plan amendment.
At the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, you can, you can, Bill, you can recommend something at the public hearing.
Sure.
I mean.
I was literally trying to add three words to a particular phrase so that it wasn't so focused on the current, present, but could be inclusive of future.
Ashley, could you take that tonight?
No.
No.
Because it's advertised as.
Right, it's advertised as that, but it doesn't mean that the planning board can't propose a change at the public hearing.
Sure. I will save it for the public hearing, then.
Okay, so that's, I think, all we need to do with that, those Agenda Items Five, B, and C. Did I cover everything, Ashley?
I believe so.
So that brings us to D. And I think we're going to skip over D.
I confirm that the planning board has authority to, to adopt subdivision regulations. Tricia pushed me on it. Actually should have. And I thank her for it.
I'm so sorry. Could we go back to B and C? I just had a, sort of a question around sort of sequencing.
Yes.
So we're talking about the joint meeting with the Town Council on the 24th, about the proposed comp plan changes. I'm sorry, when are we advancing the R-120?
At the same meeting.
Same night.
The same night. So the sequencing has to be?
The comp plan first.
Thank you.
And the zoning ordinance.
Then, then we do the R-120, then we do conservation. But then we have a fourth item, which is a list of prohibited uses under Section 15, right?
Article four, section 15.
And so that is also on the agenda, so all.
And a fifth item.
And a fifth item.
Continuing the special use moratorium, I'll call it.
Special use.
And, and continuing the special, and that, and that brings us right into the next agenda item. So, but they'll take the, the, I think the, I think the Town Council has agreed to do all five of those in that sequence. So it's going to be an interesting night. And it's a public hearing. So we'll, we'll have some.
And we're starting at seven?
Not everybody will be in agreement. High school. Okay, so that brings us to the next huge item on the agenda, which we're not going to actually take up. We have been going through the, the use table, looking at all of the special use permits, and there are over 100 of them. And we've been trying to do that, going through different categories of uses that span all different zones. And I think this is a task that, we've been really struggling with this. It's hard to get our arms around something so amorphous because we don't know all of the issues that could result from making a special use permitted by right. Because we don't know how different industries, businesses, clubs, churches, whatever it is, what impacts their operations may have on the town of Tiverton. And so we've been really struggling with this, and we need a new approach. And I, and, and we've, we've been looking at the approach that has been taken by the Zoning Revision Committee. And what they've been doing is they've been looking at specific zones, like the waterfront zone, like the, you know, highway commercial zone, the industrial zone, the two, the waterfront zone, and to go through the uses just tied to those zones. And that's a little easier task to get done because, because we all have in our mind exactly where that is in Tiverton and how those different business operations and, and other operations, whether it's farming, or, you know, utilities, or whatever the uses are, how that might impact that particular zone, because we all understand where those zones are. And we all have something in our, a picture in our mind. So it's a little easier. But I think we also need to bring in what some of the other towns have done with, with. But I think we also need to bring in what some of the other towns have done with, with these, with these uses, because I think now, other towns are beginning to adopt changes, just as, as every town in the state of Rhode Island has had this same issue with special use permits, and, and having to deal, you know, either to, to keep those special use permits with specific and objective criteria, or to, or to make them permitted by right, but then set performance standards on, on, on the permitted by right. So, Ashley, do you have anything to add to that? We, we just, I, I think that at, at our last meeting, we were struggling so hard that I, I don't, I don't, I didn't think it was a good use of our time, frankly. I, I really felt that we hadn't structured the project carefully enough, and that's my responsibility, to, you know, to, to help us get through it. So, we were just, it was taking us forever. You know, we were like trying to reinvent the wheel on all of this stuff, and we need more help. Otherwise, I'm going to suggest that we just turn all of those S's into no's.
Well, they're already no's.
They're already no's.
So, you don't have to do anything for that.
Well, but they're not, they're not going to stay that way forever.
But I guess, I was not at your April meeting, where you attempted to kind of go through that, because we, Weston and Sampson did take, so if you remember February, we basically spent like every Saturday in February going through that use table, identifying, you know, what the specific and obje, or at least what the concerns were, so that we had a sense, we could draw from that, to give you specific and objective criteria for those uses that you had determined were going to revert back over to special uses at the end of all of this. So, the, we gave you essentially those uses, based on the comments, suggested language, based on what other communities we know are doing, whether they've adopted or not adopted, and also, just general research of like what, what's out there. You know, when we, when we knew you had an issue with something, we, you know, did some digging, well, what are the, what are the concerns related to? You know, what are the mitigating measures we can put in to criteria that would alleviate concerns? That was meant to be basically as like a starting point for you all to then work through that language and tell us, yes, we like this one, or this one didn't go far enough, we need this to say more, or you, you know, completely missed this one, and it's just not good enough, and we need to do, do this differently. Unfortunately, I wasn't at your meeting when you first looked at that. We also began, and didn't want to throw too much at you, but, but are well along in terms of putting together the performance standards, also based on the feedback that you gave, but held back on that piece of it. It just, it felt like a lot, felt pretty overwhelming, thought we could kind of do this in two segments. Also, then, we're told that the, the game plan to go forward was to back up a little bit, because of all of the discussion that's going on, in terms of what stays what, and what goes back to what, and with the planning board working on it, and the zoning committee working on other parts of it, it became clear that the best thing to do at that, at that time was just to hang on a second and try to collect what everybody was doing, and, and do this, not in a way that, you know, had two different groups going in two different directions. So, I don't, you have the budget to tell Weston and Sampson what you want from us, in addition or differently than what we've provided. I just, I'm not sure what you want to do to move this forward.
Well, one thing, one thing that we might want to consider is, rather than go through the, the use table, just looking at special use permits, we maybe should be looking at everything, because the whole thing, at, at the end of the day, the whole thing needs to get done. And Weston and Sampson has the contract to, to, to do everything, to, to completely revisit and, and redo the use table. Not just special use permits, but, but everything else. And that is kind of the approach that the zoning revision committee has taken. So, they, they've been going through the use table, not just looking at special uses. There are two members here tonight.
Yeah, I just have a question about that. Like, the last time I heard, we heard y'all were going to finish it up on the zoning end, and then bring it back to us. That's the little plan. So, so my suggestion might be, because, so let's just take the waterfront, for example, right? Right now, there's this little tiny waterfront district in our zoning code that barely allows you to have anything, right? It's almost, you know, there's, there's three commercial uses in there, and that's it. Well, the zoning revision committee has done this, is proposing this big, total overhaul of waterfront, like, and it's going to be proposing two different waterfront zones, and a whole bunch of uses, and a bunch of things that, you know, are even new to the zoning code. So, my suggestion is, and, and I was actually going to ask for some of these to be on the seventh meeting, if it's ready. There are some zones that the zoning committee is done, is basically done with, right? They've done the whole thing. They've looked at the, they've looked at the use table, they've looked at the specific uses, they've said which things should be permitted by right, which things they think should be a special use permit, but they haven't, there, there hasn't been a deep dive into the criteria for special use permits. There's sort of a high-level dive, right? So, my suggestion is that those zones start to come here, and then the planning board can review them sort of, again, soup to nuts. But the more finite crafting of specific criteria or performance standards can happen here, and then, once that's done, those things can get shipped off to the council, for the council to decide whether they're going to adopt them or not. But at least that way, everybody's only working on one thing that's the same thing, as opposed to, the planning board's working on special use permits, for example, for the waterfront zones that exist today, while the zoning update committee is over here, like, creating a whole, a whole another second waterfront zone, and a whole bunch of uses you got, that it, the planning board hasn't even discussed. And there are some zones that are ready to come here, so if there's room on the, on our July agenda, it would be good to, you know, get them here, at least to start the discussion.
I like that idea. I would just ask if there's any way to take any of the existing work that has been done by Weston and Sampson around taking our feedback around the criteria, like, can we, thank you, I had to warn her when the lights were going to go. Can we merge these two proverbial lanes together, so the discussion, when it comes back to us, that the planning board is as efficient and fruitful as possible, we're not necessarily starting from square one, knowing that there's some new stuff?
Right, but for some of the old stuff...
For some of the existing.
Right, yeah, there, I don't, I mean, I'm pretty sure Ashley could do that, because you've already got the, you've already got the list, right, and what the planning board raised as a concern about that particular use.
Yeah, I mean, the way we've been doing it is that as you, as the zoning committee was amending the use table, that's, that, those amendments were folded into what you were responding to. So, the use table that you were all responding to on those Saturdays was, at the time, the use table that the zoning committee had, had amended, as far as they had gotten. That's the best I could do to bring those two things together. The logistics of it is just that we drafted, we drafted the zoning revision for the specific and objective criteria directly into your zoning ordinance, and that's not done by zone, it's done by use, because if we did it by zone, we'd have to repeat over and over and over again for anything that's allowed in multiple zones. So, it makes, it may make sense to work through it that way, but it, it, it doesn't make sense to organize it that way in your zoning ordinance.
Sure.
The, I have to figure out, without, you know, too much extra effort, how to, how to bring those, because what we gave you basically was the zoning ordinance amended, with the whole section of specific and objective criteria, again, not by district, but by use.
I'm just trying to figure out a way.
Yeah, no, I don't...
Throw in a, we're limiting the amount of throwing.
I don't want to throw anything away.
No.
The only way I want to throw something away is if you look at it and say, well, that's a stupid, specific and objective criteria, we don't want that in there. That's the only way I'd really like to throw anything away. I just have to figure out a way to bring back what we've already done to you in a way that reflects zones and not uses, and that not, that might not be a quick exercise. I, I don't know.
One of the things that the zoning update committee has done is made the uses more specific, so then they can be permitted by right, because the use is more...
It's less like, what the heck does that mean? I could fit 17 things under that if I felt like it.
Yeah, and that, that makes for less special use permits, because the use actually...
Is pretty specific, and then we've given it a definition.
And then it has a definition. So, that, that eliminates some special use permits right there.
I mean, overall, I love the, the flow, like zoning, us, council, like, just keep that conveyor belt sort of moving as work is ready.
So, anyways, my request would be that whatever we have room for on the seventh that we add, and also on the seventh that we add the solar ordinance, because that needs to get updated, and there are, there have been requests to do it, and that's a special use permit, then the zoning update committee hasn't taken it, I don't think they have to, the planning board can do it, but we should do that, so that one can get sent off, too.
Are we having this special meeting on the 27th?
Yes.
Do we have the 24th with the council?
I think the special meeting was the 24th.
No.
That's the council's public hearing.
Why are we having a special meeting on the 27th?
To adopt subdivision regulations.
Regarding conservation development, assuming the council approves it on Monday.
Sometimes I can't.
There have been two that week.
Which I cannot be there on the 27th.
I'm not here. Told you that last month.
You're going to be home alone.
Why can't we do that on July 2nd?
You wanted to do it on, right away.
Yeah, we wanted to.
Before any applications came in, that would require conservation development. This is what this board decided last month.
Yeah, we did.
That was to minimize the risk.
That was to minimize the gap of time in between, if the council adopts the zoning ordinance, and then you adopting.
So, we can have a very short meeting on the 27th, right? Which is a what day of week?
Thursday.
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 You taking us out drinking after, Stu?
Yeah, McDonald's.
They don't serve anything good to drink.
I don't think there's anything there.
Okay, you're at 27.
Okay, so that brings us to approval of minutes, and we have two sets of minutes, May 7 and May 16. I haven't gone, I haven't gone through them, I just got them today, and forgot to go through them this afternoon. So, has anybody gone through them and made any comment?
I have the 16th.
You don't have the 16th?
No.
On page two, the date says June, June 5th, 2024.
Which one, Dick?
Uh, the first one.
May 7?
May 7th, yeah.
I have May 7th.
Mr. Gerlach made a motion to continue the public hearing at the June 5th, planning board meeting.
Pass the June 4th?
To the, to the June 4th.
Oh, it's June 4th, okay.
Yeah, and that's in two places. It's also right in the middle of the page.
Yeah, I think I kept saying it, but I even had it labeled on the...
Down, on the underlying section, down there, you could use a space between November and 8. Pretty minor.
I have a request, too.
So...
On page 3.
And, and we're talking about the, the first set of minutes, the May...
That's right, the one I was at.
May 7, okay.
May 7.
Okay.
On page 3, Miss, the third paragraph, I guess it is, where it starts off with Ms. Eva said, "I would like to state, Ms. Eva was strongly opposed to various, I can't even read my writing, various cannabis uses in the PDP zone due to the amount of children at Longplex and PDP proximity to Ranger School. Safety was a big concern." Strike the other, I mentioned it when they were talking, strike that, about the, having retail use made more sense than the highway commercial.
Okay.
But insert the other.
Does anybody else have any changes? I can't even vote on this, because I wasn't at the meeting. So, somebody else can make a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion to adopt the minutes of May the 7th as amended.
Do it. And we have a second from Dick Taylor. Do we have any further discussion? Here, all of those in favor? Okay. Anybody opposed?
Plus you.
You weren't, okay, so two of us were not at the meeting.
And I wasn't at the meeting either.
Three of us.
Three.
Okay. So...
Everyone present voted yes.
Yeah, okay.
So, May 16?
16, I'm, I was very disappointed, and I'm sorry that I wasn't at this meeting, but I thought I was going to be able to see it, but it wasn't recorded, so that, therefore, I think that second, the meeting was recorded and is available on YouTube should be stricken.
Mm-hmm.
And remove the drafts from the headers.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May the 16th.
It's a part of the meeting.
Oh, part of the meeting, oh, okay.
And I'll, I'll second it. I'll, I'll second that motion as amended. Anybody else have any typos for the 16, May 16 minutes? Nope, apparently not. Ed, if you've got those changes, okay, those in favor? Okay?
Absent, I wasn't here.
And we had two absent.
Three. Three.
We had three absentees.
VA, Dick, and myself.
All present.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. So, that, so that brings us to the very end. I don't, G would be land use legislative update. I don't know.
You don't want to know.
Well, I don't want to know. Okay, so we'll go to H, update from North Tiverton Business Park. I'm, I'm the rep to that, but I haven't made meetings recently for various issues, so, but I think that we've accepted the, the Weston and Sampson as the consulting firm to do the study of the north end of Tiverton. And, so that brings us to I, status of zoning code revision committee, and I'm going to call on Tricia to give us an update there. She already has.
I just, I think I kind of gave you an update of where we are, so.
Good. Okay. Does anybody want to make a privileged motion?
Can, can I ask for you to add PAL on your next meeting?
PAL?
The discussion of PAL for use hours.
For the House?
A very nice name, word.
Why?
Because you can document it if they're going to demo.
They will just have a concept plan. If they come back, we can make it a condition of preliminary plan approval.
But he has a demo permit.
They have a demo.
But they would have to pay for it, though, the applicant.
The applicant would pay for it, yes.
I was just asking if you could put that on your agenda.
I don't think you have the authority to do that, but... I don't think you have the authority to do that, but to put it on your agenda.
They could, they can demolish that house tomorrow, Sue.
I know, but I wanted you to do, talk about it, but you can't do it because it's not on the agenda, right?
We can't talk about that outside of a discussion with the applicant.
Right. That's why, but, but because it's not on the agenda, you couldn't ask the applicant when they were here to do that?
You did ask them.
I did.
I heard them conversing about it.
Right.
They did, they did not seem negative.
Right.
And they understand that they would be asked to pay for it. But, but they can, they, you know, legally, if they've got, if they've got a demolition permit.
We don't have any cause to hail them in here. They don't have pending application.
So, we can't talk about it just among ourselves. We would have to have them here. And there, and there's no reason to bring them in until they're ready to come with their application. And it may take them a while to actually, you know, make an application and have Ashley certify it as complete and get them on an agenda. So, we just have to trust that they won't tear the house down before we have an opportunity to talk to them, you know, as part of the, as part of the preliminary plan discussions about actually agreeing to have that study done of the house. I know it stinks, but that's where we are, I think. Okay, so, Rosemary, do your things.
I'll make a privileged motion to adjourn at 9:42.
And we're adjourned without even voting on that.